Madam Chairman, we're left.
Welcome to our afternoon session of Wednesday, October eighth. First up is a request from the Cascade Christmas Market.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thanks.
If you could give us your name, please.
My name's Morgan Edwards and I'm here on behalf of the Cascade Chamber of Commerce.
Nice.
I have some flyers if you guys would like them or.
That'd be great.
I am here today because.
You do need to wait until you get back to the microphone because the general public's gonna wanna hear what you have to say.
Being right here too?
Yep. I cannot believe it's this time of day or time of year.
I know, my default plan.
You're in trouble for raising this already.
My wife came back with Christmas presents yesterday from Boise. I said, where did you get Christmas presents from?
Hopefully one is for me.
How they love is on sale right now. Well, so we are, the Chamber of Commerce is moving the Christmas market and Christmas tree lighting to Armstrong Park this year. Uh, so that way we can host an actual Bavarian style Christmas market. We'll have twelve vendor booths. Uh, and then the Christmas tree itself will be just on the west side of the basketball court at Armstrong Park in that grassy area. And then there will be twelve vendor booths surrounding it and four underneath the pavilion. Uh, safety is our biggest concern. The event is a one day event from four to seven P M. However, electricity is our biggest priority at this moment because the pavilion has five housed electro- or excuse me, hot five outlets. However, the Christmas tree is ninety feet away. The vendor booths are sixty feet away. Um, and that creates a huge hazard for tripping and making too many electrical cords in those outlets. Our number one priority is to make sure people are safe when they're going back and forth through the park. However, uh, there are options that we can use such as generators, which again, it's gonna, the noise of the generators will kind of diminish the ambiance of the event itself. And then we have the Cascade School Band who will be coming and playing and we don't wanna tarnish or ruin their sound and effects with the generators and our emcee for the evening. So our goal would be, there is a pole on the north side of the Valley County Fairgrounds that has six electrical outlets. It is thirty feet away from the Christmas tree and it's on the back half, therefore it has substantially left less foot traffic. So if we would be able to utilize that pole for one day only, December sixth, at the end of the event, in the event that this is approved, if not, um, at the end of the event, it would be completely terminated at approximately eight thirty P M. When the park is cleared out. And then the park will then take over the electricity of the Christmas tree.
Good question for Scott. Are you familiar with that pole, Scott?
Not one that close, like thirty feet away. I'd have to see which one it is.
It's right next to the garage. Actually I have a picture, but I took a picture.
Close to the shop?
Yeah, that's right.
It's right on the borderline of the park.
There.
And the, uh, Valley County, or Valley County Fairgrounds.
Those are the only ones I know are out in the center.
There's a shop, she's saying there's a pole right here.
You know, not, never been used, made of functions before, had down there because all the other part poles are down here in the center.
Yep.
I remember in the past when we had four each, we could, and we allowed trailers, we plugged into that one.
Was there down at that end?
Yeah, as long as it's oper- as long as it's operable, do all those poles have their own meter base? They're all off of one central?
Well, they're off of several along, you know, back along, um. Now, you know, you know, all the sheds that run down the side?
Mm-hmm.
There's two along there that have meter bases on them that feed out to those poles that run down the side.
Uh, I see. They probably feed over to this one too then.
Yeah, either that or comes off the shops.
One of the two. Okay. All right, thank you.
Nice map.
Thank you.
Somebody has skills.
It's my word art. I have this, I took this little photo this morning. Right there along the canal, ordering right on the park and the fairgrounds.
I don't have a problem with this.
I don't either. I can't wait to come.
Yay! Thank you. The flyer serves as your invitation for you and your families as well.
Oh, perfect.
And then the second page is the list of our current vendors that we have registered with the City of Kathy. And they are all either school fundraisers, nonprofits, local businesses, all of which are Valley County residents and supporters. And then, yes, that last page is our schematics and kind of a map of everything that will happen in the event.
Is this, is this a tree that's there?
There's no tree currently, no sir.
So they're bringing in a tree?
Correct, yes sir. We have J K Construction who has, uh, Joey Kennedy, he has, I was gonna hate me for putting his name out here. Uh, who has said that they will help us get that tree all set up and, uh, prepared for the season.
Cool.
Yep.
I would move that we approve the cre- Cascade Christmas Market to use the power at Valley County Fairgrounds for vendors and Christmas tree on December sixth.
Second it is.
I moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Way to go, Morgan.
You guys just make sure, Scott, maybe you could run over there and make sure everything's set up correctly.
Then let's make sure all the plug-in outlets are cracked or broken.
Let's just make sure it's, it's safe and.
Thank you so much. I'm so grateful. My name's Morgan.
Scott.
Thank you. Alright. Actually, you'll probably be working more with Terry.
Okay.
Um, who is the, our other facility, or our new facilities director. Scott's actually retiring next week, so, uh, Terry will be who you'll work with coming up.
Especially December sixth. Ah, that's way, ways away, so.
It is.
Thank heavens.
I know.
Give you time to buy some.
Started on my presence yet this year.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, you bet.
Thank you, Morgan.
Well, you could break your ankle and then you're done with Christmas shopping because you had nothing else to do. Ah, no, I could give you my list and you could get started. I'm done now. I'm, I'm moving, so real good.
She knows Amazon really well.
Up next. My credit card is dying. Um, up next, we're gonna begin a workshop with Lake Shore Disposal. I did see Terry out there. Um, to discuss the transfer site management contract. Maybe we could all come up to the table. Grab some microphones. Terry, do you wanna grab this one?
Yeah.
Another one for you guys at that end of the table. We do need to, sure we're using the microphones. Need more chairs. There's probably some around the outer perimeter there.
I think I'll grab, instead of having my back to the, to the board, I'll pull a chair around.
We can squeeze.
Sit by.
I'll be fine. I'll do that.
Alright, it's time to start the conversation. Uh, we're doing our contract next year.
Sorry.
Do you find it? Why am I not finding it? It must have been separately and not inside of our. There we go. Alright, we're gonna open a conversation, uh, begin this process. We have until, I think, next September in order to finalize things. We have a lot of things right now that we are working on as far as woody debris and maybe getting that out of that area. So, I mean, there's, there's just some moving parts still that will impact this agreement as we move forward. So as we kinda refine those, we'll be refining this, uh, agreement. Some things maybe that we need to discuss that we found to be challenges. You guys can discuss your challenges, make sure that we're all on the same page this year as we move forward. Since I've been here, since my, beginning of my seventh year, we've had a number of challenges because the contract, I don't think, was explicit enough, detailed enough in order to identify what both of us thought to be true when we started all of this. So my goal this time is to make sure before we each sign something, each one of us knows exactly what the expectations are so that there is no disagreement um, and discussion about that after the fact. That would be my goal and one would get there.
No gray areas.
There is going to be a long-term conversation about what we do and where we move trash at the end of the day. And so it's really imperative to me that we remain in our contract, that we decide where that trash goes. Um, we will, the flow is really critical to me. I think it should be to the county. That it is decided by the county where our trash ends up going so that we can empower that conversation about our own dump site if we need one or who we're partnering with at the end of the day for that dump site. So I did want to point that out right up front. Some of the things that, um, have come up during my term. First of all, you guys have got separate contracts with people that live in the area, but there's been a lot of concern voiced to me over the fact that your trucks have broken down a lot. Um, we've had broken down trucks in the hauling. I think, you know, we do need to address having equipment that is current and that you can take care of the people in Valley County. I think that's super critical. And that people understand, you know, I totally understand your point of, if a road's impassable that day, you're not gonna send somebody onto a road that's not passable and that is a, a risk. So maybe we need to identify some of those upfront, so, you know. Where I, we're talking to those people, you're gonna move your trash can down to the end of your driveway because we're not gonna go get it from you because of the, of these reasons. That would be something to talk about. We've also had a lot of the equipment that has been down during the time. We need some kind of an agreement. You guys have broken equipment. You're gonna replace it in a timely fashion so that we move trash out of that transfer site up there. And then the exclusivity, um. This ca- this has come up more than once from, like, we had a guy that bought an old trash truck and he was gonna go clear out his V R B Os and then bring it to one of your sites. And you guys sued him for that and he had to shut down. So I wanna know what exclusive means in our contracting. So just, we need to broaden that base a little bit as far as that conversation. Um, those are my main concerns that have come up since I've been here. And then just the condition of the site. Okay, so we gotta do better. That's, we're, we're gonna have a brand new site up there. We're spending a lot of money improving that and it has got to be managed to the point where that trash is being taken out of there and it is. I, I walked it for the first time in a couple of years and I was appalled about the amount of trash that's off the side. We gotta figure out how we best manage that. There's trash down over the side of it, blowing trash. You know, if we need to fence it, you know, what do we need to do to keep trash on the top so that we don't have blowing trash bears into it? All that good kinda stuff, so those would be things I wanna talk about. Have anything to start with?
No, no, I'd like to hear from, you know, Scott and Terry and from their perspective on going forward. Cause I know Scott, Scott's fixing to leave us and he's passing baton to Terry and.
Oh, well, you know. And it, we, it's been proven now, actually with this temporary site, if they, if Lake Shore can maintain enough operating vehicles and trailers, we can keep up with the volume coming in there. And that needs to continue. Um, one of my real heartburns is the fifteen percent for picking up the phone and calling a guy to come grind or come do something. Um, the, the markup on that is, uh, kind of a heartburn for me and stuff. Especially when it's going to a contractor that's actually always connection, you know, division and stuff. But even, you know, um, having, um, the H V A C guy, you know, calling him up and he does all the work, but we, we pay fifteen percent for picking up the phone, you know, and stuff. So I think that needs to be addressed and, um, in, in this next contract and stuff like that. And, you know, like, like we're talking with the woody debris, it's really kinda up in the air right now till the deal with this, this other company, it looks like they're going, if they're actually going to be able to handle all our woody debris. If not, if we're gonna continue with the volume, then I think it needs to be, uh, put out to bid. See if we can't get someone local here, because I can't believe someone can't come grind it cheaper that's local than someone coming from Clearout State. Right. And stuff, so. Say, go, you know, long as they'll maintain the volume they're hauling right now, once the wars back up, I think things will be great. You know, I don't wanna, I don't think anybody wants to see it out, clear out to the burn anymore and stuff and anything. So, um, I think with the improvements with the scale of the pits, so when Eric knows his full, James can get another truck in there right away and there's someone to pick that one up and keep the volume we're dealing with, um, keep it inside the building. I mean, everything's gonna be lit better out there, uh, won't have as many people, residents, you know, inside the building with the Z wall, so hopefully things will go quicker and smoother. And as long as they, you know, keep trucks and equipment up and running. It should work.
Terry, you got anything you wanna share?
Um, well, I'm super new to this, but from my observation, we need to have, uh, a lot better hazardous waste control, uh, within the trash that gets dumped there. Uh, it's kind of like from my observation, a free-for-all. People just roll up there, they weigh in. The scale house can only see so much, uh, and they come around and they just dump and run. So if, if Lake Shore doesn't have somebody standing right there policing what people are throwing out of the back of their truck, we need all kinds of hazardous waste that does not belong in the dump. Which causes fires, it causes all kinds of stuff. So that I would like to see. I think we need to stand up a hazardous waste out here permanently, not just once a year. I know that that's a cost, you know, um, to recycle as well. Um, in the, in the end of the day, um, my goal is whatever is in the best interest of the county period. And I would really like to dig into the finances and find out whether or not it is in the interest of the county to continue to have someone else operate our transfer site. Um, this last conference that I went to, it didn't seem like that was in the best interest of other counties and they are operating their own transfer site. So, but we are different, we're a different entity, so it doesn't mean that that's not the right answer for us.
What, what do you guys wanna address in this?
If, if I may?
Absolutely. Oh, by the way, and Terry does an awesome job. I like Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Terry, just so like, you know, we're hearing much better things.
Yes.
Well, I, I, and I would like to speak about what we talked about. So I believe we met back in February. I think we had a conversation. You tasked me with a few things to do. You know, since then, let's start with the hauling side. We talked about the trucks. Uh, I do have two stable mechanics now. We brought in a maintenance manager from Alaska. We got two spare trucks up and running for the hauling side plus a spare commercial truck on the commercial side. And then we also have a new roll-off truck which was supposed to be here in September. Now they're telling me October.
Welcome to our world.
I can't really control the trucks, but it will be here before the end of the year. Uh, as far as the transfer sided things, I believe you tasked me with more equipment. We got that extra loader up there. You tasked me with more people. I have added two headcounts to the transfer station. As Terry exclaimed, uh, we do have a spotter up there. She's up top right now, but she will be working the bottom also. When we go down, she will stay there. Plus, we hired another operator. So we'll have three operators now. One guy that command up top, one guy that can screen the trash and then of course Eric and James doing what Eric and James do. Um, I believe so far it has worked out up top with that kinda regimen. Uh.
It's probably gonna work a lot better with the new way that it's gonna flow.
It, it will. It'll work out a lot better. Uh, there's a lot of confusion still up top, which blows me away some days. I mean, just with the public, but, um. Did get a lot of the woody debris cleared out. They have done a, I'm gonna compliment my guys here and I hope Scott and Terry would do the same, but they have done an excellent job of keeping that clean up top for it being an outdoor facility. We have added, uh, two more trailers. Added another driver to our long haul guys. So we have three drivers plus we still use Wallace when we need him. Uh, I sent all my trailers through a shop throughout this past year. Every one of them's been reworked, redone, ready to roll. We'll, we'll re-maintain them this winter and make sure they're ready for summer. And we have added an extra long haul truck. And then I have two trucks that are down at the moment being rebuilt for motors so that we don't run into the problem next summer.
How many miles you get off of the, uh, off the motor?
It really depends. Sometimes, you know, you might get a million miles out of a motor. Sometimes with these new motors, we had something weird like an injector tip break off and go through the motor. It's really.
That's weird.
Yeah, it's, it's rare, but it's something that happened to us this year.
We had one of our new vehicles, what was it, three hundred and sixty-seven miles on it?
Went into limp mode, yeah.
Yeah, it's all those new D P F.
All that crap, yep.
It, it makes it hard on the trucks, uh, but I, I think we're in a position to, to move forward, um. We understood as well as you did, we're watching the growth and the way that the county's growing, you know? And that we needed to step up our game also to be able to grow with the county, so.
And I think this year, uh, communication from our community would be much appreciated too. They tore apart that, tore apart that hospital and, you know, that was a huge all at once with nobody knowing what was going on. People were going, where are all the houses coming from? But I think it was the old hospital.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with you. I think that's the one conversation I did have with Scott and Terry and maybe you guys can, can help with that. So I understand they give out permits for these tear downs, Valley County does?
No, most of the city. The ci- the city, cities require a permit for tear downs, but we don't. And it might be, that's something we discussed, something.
Discuss that.
Is discuss that and you're given a time to deliver your teardown. You know, you just don't show up with it unannounced so that we have a heads up. It's something we're also considering keeping the temporary loading site up there for, that stuff goes up there. Um, and doesn't get involved in trying to load it into the trucks down there, um. But trying to get it set up, as Terry was, you know, thought, came up with is that, you know, that we know it's coming, but we just don't get surprised with three houses all at once or, and stuff. And it seems since property development's changed, people are buying properties with houses and tearing them down instead of looking for an empty lot. They're just, they got enough money, we'll just tear that house down and, and build what we want. So I think going down the road, if that trend continues, we're gonna see, because tear downs weren't that often. Yeah, but, I mean, all this last two years, we've just gotten hammered with them.
Yeah, what hurts us is if they're running, what did we add that day? Three plus the hospital?
Yep.
It, it's just impossible to keep everything in the building at that point.
Yeah, I think a teardown permit makes sense.
You know, maybe if we can schedule one per day or schedule.
Cities too.
The city was, um, considering curbside recycling too, um, McCall. You guys know where they're at with that? Or you have anything to?
Uh, we've discussed it vaguely with them. They wanted it to be part of the R F P process.
Till that process opens up.
And I think they wanna wait till they, they revisit that in twenty twenty-eight.
That's probably something that's more relevant to McCall than the county, but I just, if you guys end up getting the bid, then I'm just curious how that would impact your services countywide.
Well, where would you take the recycle?
Well, that's where it impacts.
Recycle center or?
Yeah, that's where it impacts the counties.
That's what I talked to Scott a while back for it is, uh, if we were to bail it down there, we would split utilities or costs on the building and bailer with you. Um, the other thought was we could store it in roll-offs and trucks and haul it off to Ontario. Um. Obviously it would set the county up also if they were ever interested in a residential recycling program. Seems kind of a.
Well, to me, to, I just, I could go with the numbers. To me, if it doesn't pencil, I ain't gonna do it.
Right.
And you guys know what recycle pays.
Yeah.
Not much.
It doesn't.
It, it, it's more, it, it's more geared for what the people want versus what you get out of it, I guess.
I know.
There's, there is no money in recycling.
It's not, yeah, it's not a moneymaker at all.
I mean, it does reduce what goes into the transfer site, so it does re- reduce, you know.
The amount that. Tons haul within and out on the other end, it goes back out to, to pay them to manage it. I don't know whether the amount goes in if you, how, how many tons goes in there and gets hauled to what we pay a year if, you know, if, if we're saving all that much, but it, uh, to me, it feels like it's something we should be doing and it should be more profitable, but.
Well, our community wants recycling period, so, you know, we'll, we will follow up with. And have to pay for that too as well.
I think the biggest obstacle with it's the transportation because there's no end market here, you know, in Idaho really. It's all gotta go interstate. And so that transportation piece is the biggest factor into it.
Well, and I think we're just gonna have to wait and see what happens with McCall, but we are gonna have to talk about where that goes as the county's not gonna absorb that cost, you know, of all of that without some kind of, at least paying to make sure that we're made whole. We'll have to discuss that whenever we get there. It, that's this next year, isn't it?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Oh, twenty twenty-eight, okay. So we'll have to do some kind of a good faith clause where we'll relook at that, maybe open it up for discussion with that. When that decision is made, but.
One thing to look at once we get through with the improvements at the transfer site is now, because we improved our collection for recycle, but we're still in that little building. We have a new baler, but recycling actually needs a better processing building, um, something that's bigger that, uh, they can dump the truck all the way up and drive. Right now, they gotta go up and back and forth, back and forth. They tear the door down. Um, need better storage for, especially for the winter months. Um, I did draw something up at one time, uh, you know, our building that would include the baler and, you know, actually we improved the collection, but we didn't improve the processing other than buy a new baler. That kind, I think in, in a solid waste envelope, that's kind of the next thing that needs to be addressed is, uh, better processing, uh, facility.
I think we've been talking about that. I mean, once we know exactly what this is gonna cost us and then we move on to the next. I mean, our collection should allow us.
Next thing in, solid waste improvement, we've now, we got the transfer site taken care of, is now we kinda go back and look at the recycle and the processing facility of what is collected.
I agree. And then we start saving for a new dump site somewhere, so we kinda know what the process is. Um, so I'm looking at the contract. We're just moving through the contract. Hazardous materials, we definitely do need to solidify, you know, what that looks like. So I'm on page right now. I'm on page three, um.
Madam Chairman, I, my apologies for my interruption. You do have the agreement then in front of you.
Okay. Um, excluded waste. Talking about how to move hazardous materials throughout the county. Guess what? Maybe for the, what would make the most sense and I'm open to, you know, conversation, but maybe we do a markup of the existing contract. You guys do a markup of the existing contract. And then we get together for this meeting and see where we agree and where we have differences. Cause really what we should be collaborating on is what are those differences? Um, we need to find out, you know, there may be stuff that we both agree to and we just move on and make sure that everything's included. But the stuff we disagree on, that's where we're gonna have to go back and have some kind of a discussion about it and figure out how we resolve those issues. I think that because there is so much change in woody debris, maybe we totally take woody debris out of this contract and have a separate contract. And then that is more fluid, it does not impact our long-term contract for waste disposal. And I, I think that would make sense. Is there any other things, you know, maybe we should do as a separate item? That would be something I'd throw out there to you guys. That maybe we should, if there's any part of this contract that we wanna keep separate, but because woody debris is such a fluid conversation right now, I don't think we should migrate those two things because we're just gonna be rewriting it in the short term.
C and D still go up there.
So, yeah, basically what our guys, we're having them do is they were mixing the C and D because it's only supposed to be the clean lumber now, not the painted stain. Because it's only supposed to be the clean lumber now, not the painted stained treated, yada, yada, yada. They were putting the C and D right in with the woody debris because they're just grinding it up for hog fuel and sending it down to the mill, so it didn't have to be separated no more. I i- if you guys would like to carry that on, I mean, in my mind, it made sense.
It's time, yeah, trying to maintain separate piles, it just it it didn't make sense and so it I I think it works best. Combining it now that we're, you know, we monitor it, stuff, you know, going on the floor that. Would have to go on the floor anyway, so there was no reason to keep it separated up there anymore.
However, if we move the woody debris out of that down to the Lake Fork site. How, you know, are you gonna, how are you gonna handle that?
Well, C and D that's acceptable going to pile, we'll we'll go down there. We we still need a list from Forrester or whatever it is. On what they will and won't accept. I mean, is clean C and D, is something they can burn and and maybe product with or?
Yeah, they don't want any, they don't want any dimensional number of any kind.
They don't.
They want totally just strictly woody debris. At least that's what they.
Then we'll have to continue to collect it up there and and look at.
And I'm just thinking of contractors, you know, that would be a nightmare for contractors. So, uh that's not gonna work, taking it to two different places.
Well, no, I'm not.
They're not, they're not coming with mixed loads ever, you know, we're getting green, you know, woody biomass and then contractors are bringing their C and D. We're just combining them on the hill up there, so it's still coming two separate deals. If another woody biomass goes to Lake Fork, that the site and the C and D, then we would have to probably.
When the contractor shows up though, are they sorting it on site? Or are they bringing a totally clean trailer full of?
They gotta be clean stuff. If it's got any trash in it, it goes on the floor.
Uh, what I'm, what my ask is, is that do you have a contractor that pulls up there and throws out the good clean wood and then goes to the floor with the rest of it? I mean, if we have, if they have to stop at Lake Fork and pull out all that C and D. We're much more at risk to have stuff down there that's not.
No, the C and D will go to Lake Fork at all, cause these guys don't want it.
Yep, they don't want that.
Well, that's, we gotta keep all that.
I I would say the biggest issue that that we've run into with the woody debris other than C and D is it comes with a lot of dirt. A- and that makes a problem for these grinders. But through a lot of different blades. And then uh would be the integrity of the public. You know, I've seen several loads this year where they claimed it was all woody debris and there was trash underneath. My guys did a good job catching a couple of them and having them clean it up themselves, but. It does happen quite a bit.
Yep, that's where you, that person on the site is very important because the public is public.
The public is the public.
Unfortunately, other base is that honest.
We should tell them they can't dump again if they get caught being. Sideways.
When they're walking up in the forest.
That is a true statement. Yeah, we can't tell that.
You tell people they can't haul stuff to the dump, then it goes somewhere, it's. It's gonna have to be cleaned up again somewhere else, but yeah.
I I did see or read something where you guys were uh. Making a law or making it mandatory for people to make sure they tarp these loads. I thought that was a great idea because.
Should be that way.
It is, it is. So there's a state statute that the police can actually, if they stop them, you know, they can actually ticket them. And I think they had four of them this year. What we're going to do is put an ordinance in place that you show up at the dump without a look, tarp on, you're gonna get a ten dollar fee.
Okay, that's what I read, I read a fee. I like that. So many times you get on the farm block down farm bar here.
It's just a mess, fifty five's a mess, yeah. There will be a, I'm supposed to be working on that ordinance and I haven't started yet, so there will be. And a full conversation about that with the community to see what the community thinks.
Yeah, taking, like you're saying, taking the woody debris off the table and dealing with all the rest of it. I think if you guys looked at it, worked it out and we do the same.
So for the general public, I mean, I know you guys have like a con, you guys come pick up my trash. My trash is between you and I and I pay for that privilege. Do we have any oversight with that though? We had a lot of really upset people last year.
I I I think I was gonna bring this up when we got to the hauling side, but you had mentioned, uh. I I I've tasked my guys with identifying their risky stops for the winter, like we talked about in our last meeting. Uh, which will take effect and we hold it into effect, we're trying to hold it in effect, November first to May first for these certain stops. Obviously, it may not snow November first, but it's good to have a date. For those people. Uh, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the commissioners, is I would share it with you and Terry. Our list of residents, cause you made the comment to me and it actually made sense. You know, if we ask these people to move their cans, other than tell them we'll get them when they can and they get upset because they think the road's good, but the road's not good. Maybe we give these people the option to move their cans in the winter and if they don't wish to, we just cancel their service for the winter. And move on. I li- I like that idea you had and I'd be willing to share. We could put into a spreadsheet those customers that. And a narrative as to why, and then you would have it also if it helps.
Absolutely. That works for me. I think, I mean, it's the setting the expectations for people. That's when we get in trouble is when they have an expectation that we're not going to meet and we know we're not gonna meet it. So let's just change the expectation. Last year, it was either last year or year before, though, you guys didn't pick up trash on West Mount for like four weeks in a row. And man, we get hammered on that.
I think that was part of the problem was our communication was more reactive than like getting it out to people on the front, so I think. That's one of, Terry and I have talked about that, is being a lot more proactive and listing those people and talking to them and. Letting you guys know, so if you get that phone call, you have that info too.
And they know then, if they go to town, take a bag of trash with you, you know, or something, you know, take it to the tr- dump yourself, but.
The way this place is growing, like we stated before, and some of the places these people are moving. Are just not feasible for trucks to go in the winter.
And then they're calling us and saying, are you gonna plow our road? Did you do your due diligence before you bought that place? I mean.
Some places, so you know, I I would have no problem sharing those narratives and those addresses with you.
No, that'd be great. And just make sure that if it's on their bill, if there's a note in their bill or something, you know, you may need to. I I'm sure you guys can't get it in those individual bills, like any more than we could in a tax form, but.
What I started doing last year with people is typically we won't credit for weather, we won't credit. Or what we started last year is, uh. I- if we can't get you due to weather one week, we don't credit you, we'll take your extras the next, but if we can't get you for two weeks in a row. Then I would issue the credit for the weather.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think just that gives me, um, you know, hope that we we're not gonna get all those calls. We really have little to do with it, but people don't understand that.
No, and and I get it. We we've had the same thing. I think this will be our. Second or third year not doing Pine Lakes in the winter. Uh, but even last year, those people were upset and. We we told them.
Why did you do Pine Lakes?
Cause the county don't plow that road, it's it's a subdivision that they state, they take care of. But we were headed up there, what was it, two and a half years ago, almost three years ago? We're headed up that road, driver lost traction on the road, cause it was a solid sheet of ice, it wasn't taken care of and it went off the road. So to keep the, yeah, to keep the public and my drivers safe. I- if there's areas like that that we should not be into because. You can't guarantee the roads if, you know, if you've been up Pine Lakes, I'm sure each of us has, it's a pretty windy, steep road. Uh, what we did for them was we put a container down at the bottom. I worked with their H O A, I put a front row container down at the bottom, those people could bring it down, put the trash in the dumpster.
Yeah, that's a great way of comforting.
You may need some out there in Crown Point.
Yes, Crown Point is one of our target areas this year as well as over here off Warm Lake in that Joshua area, there's a few of those. There's a few areas over there that are really tricky too.
Cause people are fielding out in the trees.
What at the transfer site, you know, you guys have, I would assume anyway, been part of the conversation about what we're doing out there. And kind of know what the flow is gonna be. What else has has been a frustration for you that the county needs to address?
For the stra- my biggest frustration with the transfer station was the looping around of the trucks time and time and time. And I think Scott did a great job, I'm not sure if he came up with the idea, but to put that scale. Inside for Eric so he can read it. And know what his weight is for that trailer, we don't have to go jump in that line and go around in circles anymore. It was probably our biggest hurdle there was.
Scott told me that, I said, they they're doing what?
Because we we can't jump in front of anybody, so if we're trying to weigh a trailer and there's six cars in front of us, well then. He can't get in to weigh the trailer and he's waiting to get the trailer weighed. Eric can't load a trailer because.
That makes such a big difference.
Oh, it'll be huge.
If it was set up that way, there was, we took out an old scale. And but I don't, uh, it it was installed improperly. And ceased to function and, cause there was a scale with a reader at one time in that, in that. And so, we're 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 actually replacing something that was there, but it's installed correctly this time. There'll be big. Um, displays in there that'll give him front, rear and total weight. So as soon as he sees he hits his mark, he can get ahold of James, give me another trailer and that one will go out and they can just. We've, you know, they they've proven they can they can do it, you know, with the temporary site up there, where they got the tractors, the trailers. Um, we can, we can keep up with the volume generated by this community. And now with the new tipping floor and or and stuff and with that scale down there, it's a bigger scale. They can get bigger, their trailers will be totally on it, not having to wait for under rear axles, it'll weigh them both at the same time.
One of the, I'm sorry, Scott. One of the things that you just reminded me, we have brand new stuff up there. We need agreement on, you guys hit something, you're gonna fix it.
I I agree full heartedly.
So we need to make sure that that clause is in the new agreement. Are you taking notes, Brandon?
Addendum to the current agreement?
Yeah.
It'd be an addendum to our current agreement?
So that for the next three years.
Gonna have brand new.
You break it, you bought it.
Yeah, I I I I would have no problem with that. I don't think Travis would either.
I don't think so.
The the other thing, back to your first question, was what's one thing the county can do for us? So since, I know there's been a lot of. Panels poking out from the building and things like that, and I I had a theory behind it. Uh, a lot of that happened, I'm not talking about Mr. Carnes and what he did, but a lot of that happened. Uh, well, we took a lot of that woody debris and stuff from down there and if you've ever seen those trusses pushed or that stuff, it like porcupines. And if you just got a thin piece of tin that's held in by a screw, it don't take much to pop a panel out. Whereas they're adding in those armor plating.
Gonna be ten foot.
To the walls and they're taking out that metal pylon.
Me like a big chute.
Yeah, I think it it's gonna be a huge difference on. How the building looks at the end of the day too, when you got more protecting that tin than just a little screw. Be a huge difference.
The county's just spending so much money that, you know, we have to agree that we're gonna take care of that facility in the future.
No, and and I have no problem with that. I I one hundred and ten percent believe if my guys damage something, we should fix it.
And I hate to go back, but the whole design probably wasn't optimal back in the day. And I met with Joe up there on Tuesday, just so I can give a update for the rest of commissioners and. I said, so where's this all going? And he explained the walls and how it's just gonna go up and I said, it's just gonna be a big, nice chute. It's the way it should have been from get go, but you know, that's history.
Yeah, it's a work in progress, you know, it's probably what forty years out of date at this point?
And D E Q's not happy with this, so therefore they're gonna be watching us pretty quick, you know, I. I've not gotten a D E Q letter like we've gotten this year, so um I don't anticipate getting in any in the future as we move forward.
No, and I tasked my guys, we cleaned that up, we put some up people up there, we cleaned it up and then we brought in more people so that they can maintain it. Moving forward like I said.
Do we need any fencing? I mean, the stuff I think that goes over the side, I don't know if it's just a big windstorm, you know, I don't. I don't know how we pick up some of that stuff that goes over the side, but we really need it to keep up on the top of the pad and not be blown around, so.
Well, I I think that's something that that we should be tasked with. I think cleaning that floor, making sure it's clean at night. Doing our part there. Uh, the fencing, probably not, because no matter how tall the fence you put up, it's probably still gonna blow something over it. Put up a ten foot fence, it's gonna blow stuff at twelve feet.
And keep the bears out, but.
But it also keeps bears in in the same essence. But I think, uh, if we continue to do what we're doing, you know, uh. What I looked at was bringing a guy in at six that starts out with the cleanup from whatever the birds pick out of the trailers, the bears pick out of the trailers at night. Make the place presentable, get everything rolling. A screener would come in at seven thirty, eight o'clock and be ready to go and then my operators by eight thirty.
A guy at six better have a gun with him, so the bears hang in there.
Yeah, we have a resident there.
I mean, i- it's worked out really well when they take the couple hours and make sure everything's presentable to the public, I believe.
It'd be a rubber ball gun.
A lot more, we, actually, I went over, um, Monday with Joe, there's gonna be a lot more exterior lighting up there, cause there's basically none.
That'd be nice.
Um, so there's, I you went over with Joe yesterday, we, you know, I had a lot more exterior lighting for people coming. Early and leaving lights, so there's.
So you've got dark sky.
What?
You've got dark sky approved lights?
We have to.
Yeah, we have to. Up there, but yeah.
I was gonna say, are we gonna impact any of the neighbors, so? Okay. Um, what else? So we kind of got into it, um, a little bit when we weren't doing the automatic. Is it the the increase?
Zimmer price index.
Yeah, something about an increase, so we weren't budgeting correctly, so we got hit that one year with a pretty good increase, cause we hadn't been increasing annually. I need to make sure that we're following that process so that you guys are made whole, but we're not put at risk either.
I I think there was some confusion that first year that Scott was going as what it was and.
Okay.
The one thing is we just, we're gonna we start budgeting what in July or when do you start, when do you send out?
You just start budgeting in April.
Yeah, so something we need to know, cause like, um, we're not, you know, we're not gonna increase it if you guys don't.
Right, right, so is that's.
I'm not gonna ask to pay you more, so, um, but so when we start budgeting in April, you know, if that's something we, you know, if you can, uh. Or you you need to get us what you think you're gonna have, your increase is gonna be, so we can figure it in to the budget lines. You know, cover the long haul, the, you know, the the waste management and stuff up there, so.
Did it work out okay for you this year when I got you those numbers in March?
Yeah, so.
So we we can put that in the contract to have our budget numbers in March and then still have them take effect in October.
I think something with that too is, you know, the contract and language like we had talked about is pretty outdated. Uh, a lot of that doesn't pertain to what we, or the county does anymore. Um, you know, C P I is kind of a old form of kind of judging the inflation rates and stuff. Um, so one thing that we've talked about, uh, as waste connections is there's a kind of a newer, um. Garbage and trash index that kind of judges that inflation rate, um, for our industry. So that maybe that's something we add into the contract is is that, you know, garbage and trash index versus the C P I index. Um, and that could help.
Is that available online or something you can send to us?
Yeah, I can send, that's something I asked to the other day. Uh, this is Nate, our our controller as well, so that's, he's kind of here for the numbers. Conversation, uh, but that was one thing I asked and we're still kind of, it was just brought up to us just recently. Um, that that's a newer index to kind of go off of, so I can get some more info and share it with you.
You're up nine percent. The inflation rate went at nine percent.
I think if we're asking for nine percent, we both did something wrong.
Do the, uh, do the landfills? Do they charge us directly?
Yeah, we we every month we get tipping fee from Clay Peak and when Adams County is functioning, we do get one. Yeah, we just, we just put the claim in for Clay Peak, so. On top of the haul fee, we get tipping fees, so. On top of the haul fee, we get tipping fees, so. We're looking right around right now, a hundred and thirty dollars a ton. That's what it costs us to haul it off between a long haul fee, the waste management fee and a tipping fee from Clay Peak.
And that's part of our conversation moving forward, and we need to schedule an actual one-on-one. Uh, meeting with Adams County Commissioners, so we're all on the same page. There is a conversation that's kinda going around that Adams County will take more of our trash, but then I get somebody else, yeah, I get somebody else that says no.
They were, they took it, like, what was it, they about three weeks?
Yeah, so they were able to take like two trucks a week, however, an inspector came up and said they can't have two areas open up at the same time. And the area that he prepped for his trucks specifically, so that it was a safe, really good, nice area to go in, had to be shut down. So once they fill the other cell up there and reopen down, then they can start taking it again, but again, right now it's only two trucks a week. They're still in that process of setting up their landfill. And like I said, when I went over there and talked to them all, it sounded like. Their commissioners are not saying that.
Huge opportunity.
Are they working on being able to take more, like with their permits and everything?
I don't know if they. So in talking to their commissioners.
Communication between commissioners and.
They have to become a regional landfill to take. And then they have to be lined.
I think ninety-six ton a week is all they were allotted right now, and three of our trailers a week would eat that up. Uh, he also was showing me where they were building that cell down below. And once they get that lined and everything going, he said they should be able to take more of our trailers.
You know what time window that is like?
So if they line it, then we could. Be unlimited almost.
Yes.
What they could take, I would think.
We need to set up a one-on-one meeting with them and just do a joint commissioners meeting and actually have this conversation, cause if not. We're either gonna have to go to Idaho County or we're gonna have to find a place for our own, there has to be a hundred year plan, yeah.
Did the Idaho County thing fall through?
In fact, I'm meeting with them on the twenty-first. Um, all of us up there to walk the site and, and talk it and. And see, it seems like we've got three counties now that are interested, that's, that's what we need to start.
I, I thought I heard somebody backed out is why I asked.
At one time, they had, all had backed out except for us and Idaho County.
There was five counties at one point when the whole conversation started, so.
But after this last IAC contract, um, it's sound like we may have three counties that are interested.
I think they've had some turnover, so it takes a while to get somebody up to speed on the trash conversation.
It's a different world.
We needed to about trash.
But I mean, for us, if we could use Adams County, if that was a long, fifty, hundred year area. I don't know who us, go right there, it's sort of going all the way to our county, so I mean, there's. We just can't get Idaho County to, or Adams County to. Give us a little information, it's like they're scared to let go of control.
And if we have to, it makes sense for us to do our own, we own a hundred acres up there.
Or even for them to give us a guarantee that they can take it consistently.
Exactly.
Anyway, that's part of the ongoing conversation, we're not gonna have resolved anytime soon either, so. It might be, you know, again, it's part of the flow conversation, we decide where it goes because it may change. As we move forward.
Or diesel.
I, I was always under the assumption that you decided where we took the trash anyway.
There is a movement in the state to, um, take that away. Trash holler.
I see.
Yeah, I've been trying to get that in legislation and we're absolutely adamantly opposed. We need to figure out where we're taking it, not somebody else.
Yeah.
What else do we need to discuss?
That's one of the things, you know, right now, um, how we deal with the concrete being hauled in there. As, um, Ben, you told us, we can operate on top of the capped landfill, so that area is available out there. If woody debris, um, volume decreases and we have more space up on the deck is, look at, um. It's, it's a viable product that can be ground and reused. Or we're just pushing it over the hill back there, that's gonna come to an end or some, some point or.
We need that ground, cause I mean, our rep department could use it on trail systems.
And, well, we could use it, we could use it on the roads up there, or, you know, um.
So Scott, tell me, is that upper pad, is that where the old site is?
Well.
Where's the old site?
The old site is east of kinda where the metal pylon, where our temporary pad is right now.
Okay.
If, if you go to the temporary pad and look east, there's the big flat out there, and that is the capped, uh, landfill.
That's still on our property, that's not on the Davis property?
Oh, that's our property up there.
Oh, okay.
Sure, yeah.
Our.
I thought the fence divided.
No, that flat out there on the other side of the fence is actually the landfill.
Is it?
Yeah.
Boy Scott, you look at the map, I have the assessor's map up and it, it's a tiny window. It doesn't look like it, but we need to, maybe we need to have that state, you know?
Yeah, cause right now we're operating, we're not on the landfill.
Okay. Good to know.
Man pointed out when he was up there, looking at it with us, you know.
We need a bigger area for that concrete, the way things are going.
It's nothing, it is, I mean, the only thing it requires is it needs to be separated from rebar and just clean and, um. Cause they process it differently, but the volume we're, uh, the volume I saw this Monday coming in of concrete up there, just, you know.
Just to push it over the hill is crazy. It can be repurposed back. Same with asphalt.
Oh, that big open space is ours.
Yeah, that's the old landfill, that's the cap, as long as we don't dig down into it too far, we're, it's been thirty years since we kept and it's. It's usable property for us.
Awesome. You know, this is just a dumb question for me, cause I don't know, you might know the answer to this, but, so used asphalt. I mean, are they, do the contractors just take it and use it themselves somewhere? I mean, is there ever a chance?
Yeah.
Lay it out with a.
Talking to brother and Brad, I mean, they, they collect every bit they can, cause it's, it's become a very popular product, um. Homeowners are using it for their driveways, cause you can, you can crush it up, and when it's hot, you can crush it up and roll it and it'll. It'll almost set back up again.
Yeah, it becomes better than just regular asphalt, it, it.
It's a very viable.
And we can't ask them to do, drop it up there then, so we can reuse it ourselves.
Some of them, when you get up, some people don't, but I know talking with Brad, and, and so they, they, you know, everything they tear up, they try and. And keep and, and crush it and use it.
Seriously need to set up like a, a diversion for all kinds of stuff, I mean, I've watched brand new couches go through. I mean, it's a test to the kinda stuff that comes through there, they're just like, what in the heck is that, that shit didn't like.
Habitat for Humanity.
Exactly, but there is nothing, and even hazardous waste, there's people that come and, uh, donate. Cleaning supplies, because they're shutting down their cabin for the winter, they just bring it for somebody else to use, right? They have that kinda set up in, in Ada County for hazardous waste, if you need some paint or you need a cleaner or whatever, you just show up and take it off their shelf. Right, so, but out of the landfill, we keep them safer from hazardous materials going in their trucks.
So you're saying we would need a building that was heated of some kind and things that are viable. You set aside and let people just come get it and.
Yes, or charge a very low fee for the overhead, you know?
That's a whole different conversation moving forward.
I mean, it's a, I'm talking about a huge lift.
On camera, everybody out there on camera.
I've, I've reached out to a set, a whole bunch of people, and nobody's like. Nobody's like even responding back to me for setting up some type of restore or anything.
Uh, there is this, uh, guy's name is Casey, works at the library in the city of McCall. We are working with him, he's doing like, uh, a repair fair. Bring some of your appliance down, lawn mowers, things like that. And he wants to see what he can help the community do to repair it and put it back in use versus sending it to the transfer station. Um. Yeah, I would think if the county could come up with a place to do that or whatever, uh, we'd be helping to help out with that also.
Needs to be private industry, I mean, the county is never gonna wanna function at that level.
Well, not even function, but if, if we just did it for like an event.
Donate it to, you know.
If we were just at least able to set it to the side and say, hey.
Yeah.
I believe.
Somebody that would open a restore store, yeah, donation.
Don't some are doing something like that?
Yeah, Joe, they did, they were, they were reconditioning bikes and getting.
There, that's a huge thing that could happen in the community and should, so hopefully somebody's gonna pick up that up one of these days. Retiring, I don't wanna open a store. It needs to happen, I already talked to my kids, we need to do this, but.
Usually the person that says that is the person that's.
They talked to enough people, get somebody motivated, that entrepreneur out there, that needs to get motivated. All right, um, we've got a few more minutes if there's something else, if not, you guys get a copy, you guys get a copy. Let's take and draw on it and see where we agree and where we disagree.
You got something?
Then call another one of these.
Madam Chairman Commissioners, what I would also like to see just for the benefit of the county is something in the agreement. Uh, there was a, a previous discussion regarding Lake Shore Disposal providing us. Specific in, information regarding commercial entities and the amount of trash bins they have. And conducting an annual audit to make sure that we have accurate numbers. And we're charging those commercial businesses specifically, uh, a fee, uh, that is. Allowed per the resolution that was passed, and I don't know if that's being done on an annual basis. In which Lake Shore Disposal is providing that information to the county, so I do think that it would be a benefit to the county. To make sure that we are obtaining that information on an annual basis. So we are in fact charging the commercial operations, what in fact they have for, um. Containers, for lack of better terms.
So, so you're looking for what commercial accounts, they like family dollar has.
And how many bins they have?
Bins and sizes, yeah.
I can provide that.
That's what we have, cause we have, we have the pricing scale.
Do you just, uh, or Terry, I guess this would be a question for you. Would, would that be something you just wanted added to? I send out a report quarterly, I've been on vacation this week, so you haven't got it yet, Scott, but, uh. Tonnage that's run through the transfer station, and then wells, as well as recyclables that were sent out. Would that be something you just want me to add to that report, or would you like it separately?
Um, I don't know if we just went, what do you think?
We needed annually bef- before, that information we need annually to, and that's provided to the assessor's office. Uh, the assessor then uses that, uh, to create the specials, that information is then sha- shared with the treasurer's office. Before the tax bills are going out, uh, cause the commercial operations are charged. Uh, a specific rate based on the amount of containers that they have.
You would like to see that by December first?
Realistically, if we could get that by May or June.
Oh, okay, no, that'd be.
And if we, I, I think we probably should include that in the contract, just so it's very clear.
So if, if you want, we can put it in for March at the same time as the price increase, if you like.
Works. I think just working with the assessor annually to see, make sure that she has what she needs to.
And you're just talking about the permanent commercial entities, not.
Commercial operations in Valley County that currently utilize, uh, Lake Shore Disposal for pickup.
Right, but we're not talking about a contractor. Permanent commercial accounts.
Correct.
Albertson, really, big counts.
So, but that would be, you want it for the cities also, for like the city of McCall? Like anybody in Valley County?
Yeah, any commercial valley wide.
Any commercial operations in Valley County should be assessed a commercial fee.
Okay, I follow.
As any residential, is this, if they have improvements, is assessed a residential fee. Uh, Commissioners, if you remember, for those that weren't here when that was done. Uh, we did have a public hearing, we did have a study that was conducted by Great West Engineering. The county implemented that, and I just make, I need, I feel that we need to make sure we're capturing that accurately on an annual basis. Really, it should be done as close to, uh, possible when the assessment notices are done. Uh, which would be ideal, May, June, um, if we could obtain that information.
If you get to us in March, then she has time to come through and see. Missing her.
And then maybe we'll check with you if there's a possibility of that, to see if there are any additions, um, after we get that information.
Perfect. All right, thank you, this was a good conversation, we should have it more often.
Good start.
Uh, do you wanna set a future date for?
Um, well, Terry's gonna have her hands full, with Scott retiring here, so.
Yeah.
You want sixty days?
You have, what you need?
Do the holidays at least?
December or something like that, yeah, why don't you take that charge and put it on an agenda and.
Okay.
Like sure now when we're there and just get it on one of our agendas.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, good to meet you, Nate.
How you guys?
Appreciate it.
I'm going with the sign, the agreement with Echo, when you reviewed it.
And this is the way.
Yeah, have you not met Dylan? Have you not met Bill, Dylan yet? Bring it by.
I'm surprised, it's other guys.
Very original.
Brian, how are you?
How you doing?
Good.
Shop with Perpetua to review the proposed community development agreement. Ladies wanna come up to the table? Let's see, our staff, I guess we'll call upon you guys as we need you, so. We've asked others to be in the room, but they can come to the mic as needed, so. Welcome.
Thank you.
I know Belinda, I recognize a face, but I'm sorry, I don't.
Yes, I'm Deborah Nelson.
Deborah Nelson, okay, perfect. So you're legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, we've all had a chance to uh, review this, I need a chance to bring it back up here.
Was that in our packet, or where was that?
I had to reset my computer, so now it's not here. Actually, I did a hard copy. Yes, it was in your packet, or?
It's titled the Community Impact and Benefit Agreement.
Alright, I have lots of conversation. So first of all, I'd like to just recap a little bit on where we started with all this. So the condition I use permit. I think I was the only one up here on the board at that moment in time, cause we were clear back to twenty twenty. And the CUP was for the processing site on Warm Lake. So there were some things within that um, CUP. And I believe that, you know, most of these will be met before this is all signed anyway. And I was looking through the things that we had specifically put on there as conditions of approval. And so I'm sure you guys are very familiar with all of those. So I, hours of operation still seven to seven, Monday through Saturday, that still is gonna work?
It is, um, Sherry, just so you know, um, I have spoken to the projects team during construction. They feel like ninety-five percent of the time, we will fit those windows. On a rare occasion, accidents in the canyon, snow, whatever. We may have a truck that comes in late, but we'll have twenty-four hour security there. They would check in that driver, and then that driver would go to a hotel till the next morning, to then go via convoy. Rare occasion, we wouldn't, but.
Will you have any housing on site out here at Warm Lake? Uh, one of the things shall enter into an agreement with uh, BLCC and Idaho Transportation Department to mitigate impacts to the road system. I know that this stated including maintenance of Warm Lake Road, prior to any site grading or improvements, except placement of a sign and timber fuel removal for fire protection. We don't really have anything to do with ITD in that intersection. You know, Warm Lake Highway, Jeff, you're still working on our road development agreement. That needs to come to us for a work session just like this, before anything's agreed to. Um, but when, is, is there anything that we have that states when that intersection is going to be improved? Is there an agreement with ITD on when?
Yes. Um, and based on conversation yesterday in a planning session, twenty twenty-seven is scheduled for Warm Lake Highway and fifty-five.
It might be good, Jeff, just to reference that in our road development agreement, since it was in their CUP. So it meets the condition of the CUP, that, that is referenced at least for a timeframe, even though it doesn't impact us. One of the things that I remember from our meeting that Commissioner Hasbrook was really adamant about was the reclamation bond. Um, I mean, that's being required by the Forest Service, I'm going to assume, so.
You were talking about, um. Yes, yes, for, yeah, for the actual mine site itself, absolutely, we want, uh, within the next few weeks, that should actually be in place. So when we received our notice to proceed, that was conditional upon us placing that, those bonds. They have to be secured before we can do any construction whatsoever.
Is, they, main concern that day too, was any kind of a bond on Warm Lake. I mean, I think we're really gonna have to be sensitive to um, the final outcome, a- at the end of twenty years, what does Warm Lake look like?
For sure.
So he was really adamant about that, so Jeff, we need to make sure that gets in there too.
My understanding was, Sherry, when you all had your work session with Devin Kyle, um, the, those studies, those road studies needed to be completed before all of that could be determined, but that will be part of the road maintenance agreements.
Have those studies been completed now?
They have.
Okay, so we're ready, we're getting very close to a road development agreement then, cause that's, that's a large portion of all this too.
We had to wait for the weather to get better to finish those, but now they have recently been completed, really within the last few weeks, right?
Correct. And Captain, when I saw you last, um, all of that has gone to parametrics at Jeff's request. And so parametrics does have those studies.
Maybe we could send them to us too, we have them too. So there's nothing, I mean, this was all issued to Midas Gold, the CUP. There's, that's just all goes through the ownership change, so it doesn't impact anything. Is this agreement, if we needed to rewrite it at all?
They should probably send us a formal notice that, um, of who to contact now.
So there was also an agreement to enter into the BLCC to mitigate impacts to community housing prior to issuance of any building permits. And then also an agreement with the BLCC to mitigate impacts to other county service providers and infrastructure such as EMS, Sheriff's Solid Waste, et cetera. So, who wants to start, and I'm happy to if you want me to.
I think we should just maybe start at the beginning of the agreement and go through it.
Linda, can you come to the microphone?
I thought I'd talk.
The public, I'm sure, is listening to this one, so.
Right, that reclamation bond, that condition of approval eighteen is for removal of the structures at the logistics facility, not the perpetual mines.
Oh, okay, good catch, Linda.
And if they don't use them for two years under another condi- a different conditional use permit, then they have to be removed. That's what that bond is for.
Totally missed.
Is that up on site?
At the logistics facility, which is eight miles out.
Warm Lake Road.
Oh, you either have to get a CUP to change the use.
Correct.
Or take it down.
Correct. And you want a bond? Can you just provide a little clarity, a reclamation bond, does that just mean tear it down?
A, a reclamation bond that would cover the costs.
Just to make the county whole, Belinda, I mean, if.
That doesn't fall on the, who the landowner would be at that time.
Well, if you walk away from that site.
Yes.
They file bankruptcy, they walk away, and it's non-used for two years, and the county has to go in and do some kind of reclamation on it. That gives us the funding in order to go knock it down.
Would fall under the project.
So the um, the timing for this is once, you know, after reclamation of the mine site and prior to use by any other entity, so it's not a bond opposed now, it's. If you don't continue and once you're not going to continue using it, it's a condition on the continued use by something different.
Okay.
That they either need a conditional use permit, or you've got to, at that point, post the bond to remove the structures or remove them yourself.
Thank you.
It's perfect, that's, that's how I read that, if anybody's got any questions or comments about that.
Okay, let's go to the agreement. So recitals, A, Perpetua is planning to redevelop portions of the Stibnite Mining District in Valley County for the Stibnite Gold Project, which consists of cleaning up legacy impacts of historic mining activities, restoring forest cover, stream channels, wetlands, and fisheries, commencing modern mining and ore processing operations, reclaiming the site, which is now gonna be referred to as the project. The project's scope and activities are governed by the final uh, EIS statement approved by the US Forest Service and their twenty-five recorded decision following input from community partners, including Valley County. The project will bring significant economic benefit to the growth to the community by creating more than nine hundred and fifty direct and indirect jobs during construction, and an estimated five hundred and fifty direct jobs during operation with an average eighty-seven thousand annual salary. Can you tell me where those numbers came from? Was that the economic impact statement that was?
It probably would have come, Sherry, from our feasibility studies.
Okay.
Eighty-seven thousand average wage.
That's what I mean, so they know the positions and what they're gonna be paying, and the average of all of that is eighty-seven K.
It's exceeding the area average over the approximately twenty-year construction and operation period of the project. The project will have an annual payroll of forty-three million during operations and will generate an est- estimated one hundred and sixty-two million in state taxes and mine license fees, four million in Valley County property taxes. Will you tell me how, I mean, you might have four million dollars worth of valuation, but there, where did you come up with you're paying four million dollars worth of property taxes?
CFO told me life of mine, I had to call and ask them to, to calculate those numbers, Sherry. I didn't ask them for specifics, I said, I need to know how much property taxes we're gonna pay Valley County, and that's what they told me.
The life of mine being the seventeen years?
Correct.
And that's over a twenty-year period?
Normally, um, I don't know, that, that's gonna be a hard calculation, I mean, some of these are.
I could ask him how he came to those numbers, but I'm not an accountant, Sherry, I don't know what goes into all that.
I assume it includes the um, the logistics facility, um, and materials that would be on private lands, the buildings and the equipment, and then they're calculating which of those would be property tax, yeah, subject to property tax and an, an assumed assessment there. For the project.
Let me go, three hundred and eighty-four million in federal income taxes. The project will have an estimated three hundred and forty-one million in average annual expenditures on equipment and supplies. Look, Mel, this one's gonna be for you. So throughout the time that I've been researching mines, it talks about other counties are making money on the personal property tax on mine equipment. Is that calculated into this in any way? And I think that we need to figure that one out, because that tax is one that other counties, that's where they get all their, their tax, they have no property tax, they get all of their from mining equipment. So I'd like to know, you know, kinda what that will be coming to the county. Cause that'll be a large part of the funding consideration too.
And of course, whatever is due to the county will, will be paid, so, I mean, it's, it's part of our calculation.
You know, so that's, that's important for us to know, you know, kinda what we can count on for the rest of this conversation, so. D talks about the CUP permit being approved. Uh, let's see, it includes conditions of approval requiring Perpetua and the county to enter into a subsequent agreements to address mitigation of project impacts to the road system, housing, and county services and infrastructure. Perpetua is addressing mitigation of project impacts to the road system pursuant to a separate road maintenance agreement with Valley County, including with annual payments to the county and by performing in-kind road maintenance and winter plowing of roads, which mitigates the project's impacts and also allows the county to deploy the funds otherwise needed for those activities to other roadways. Perpetua is party to the community agreement dated November thirtieth, twenty eighteen, which describes Perpetua's commitment to fund the Stibnite Foundation. Contributions to date include four hundred thousand and shares of stock. Perpetua will provide an additional one hundred thousand, additional one hundred fifty thousand shares of stock when the project receives all permits. Which, has that been done?
It has.
Okay, two hundred and fifty thousand during each year of construction, so when will that? Is that in twenty-six? Oh, it's already been received. A minimum of five hundred thousand during each year of project operation, and an annual one million at project closure for a total of at least nine point six million and three hundred thousand perpetual shares to be used toward community goals such as housing, childcare, and transportation. Full disclosure, I helped write that and was proud to do so. So very much appreciate Perpetua being proactive in its stand to the community.
Three hundred thousand shares, that's, that's a goal, that could be just
It'd be worth a little bit. Perpetua's already begun providing financial support to help address community needs. Since twenty fourteen, Perpetua has provided over three point six million in corporate giving and support to the region. Some of these contributions are described in this agreement. Um, the only thing I will state, I mean, the community agreement, since the inception, we have talked about the fact that it's sole and separate from the agreement with the county.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, county doesn't oversee that community agreement. We have nothing to do with that community agreement, so yes, it may mitigate impacts, but it's not mitigating the impacts to the county.
It's not to mitigate impacts at all.
Okay. Perpetua and the county wish to enter into this agreement to memorialize Perpetua's commitments to satisfy the CUP conditions and other commitments of support for community resources. So let's start into roads. Perpetua has performed over eight hundred thousand of in-kind road maintenance activities on county roads, including road grading, gravel surfacing upgraded and repaired culvers on Johnson Creek and Stibnite Roads and dust abatement. I, I think the road conversation really honestly is a little bit premature, I don't even know if we need to spend tons of time here, because I don't think that, you know, we've, we have anything, I mean, this is kinda past history, it's not future. And so therefore, you know, it just kinda calls out what you guys have done, but that isn't what we're gonna need during this, so. Number three again is not county-related, so during construction, you guys will work with ITD on that intersection improvement. That's not really related to anything on the county. I think this speaks to why we did the road maintenance. Throughout operation of the project, Perpetua will take measures to consolidate loads to the mine site and will operate a shuttle service for workers between the project and the offsite logistics facility to minimize traffic impacts. Traffic impacts really aren't road maintenance-related, if you will. So I don't know that that needs to be in there, because it doesn't have anything to do with the actual maintenance of the road. We're mitigating trip tra- or, you know, trip traffic, but.
I actually think that does affect road maintenance, if you had.
For sure.
A hundred cars versus one bus, I think there's a difference of where here.
Okay, so you want that in there?
You know, I'm talking to the guys at mine the other day, the hard rock is gonna be brought down, is that correct? And go to a facility somewhere to be processed, the antimony?
The antimony will leave site, that is.
It'll be trucked down?
Yes.
And all the gold and whatever other minerals is gonna be processed up on site?
The gold, silver, dore, a bars is processed on site.
Okay, so the, yeah, trucks we're talking about come down here are the ones carrying the antimony.
Antimony, trash.
Yeah, do they have an idea how many trucks? Per day?
We anticipate fifty, about fifty round trips a day on Warm Lake. And they anticipate about thirty-five of those to be trucks. We have to haul fuel.
Can you even hear what I'm saying? I will turn around here a little bit, so hopefully.
I was just curious, so.
Do you want anything in this agreement, because there's nothing here that talks about volume? Maybe we need to do an annual look back for volume? And then have something that actually mitigates if there is a higher volume?
I wouldn't know volume.
Road studies have.
The guy back there would know more volume than I would, you know, how it affects the roads?
Jeff, we may want a good faith clause in it to look at volume manually, in that road maintenance agreement, just to stay.
For the road maintenance agreement, that's what I was just gonna clarify.
I think so.
Are you gonna make notes?
Whatever.
That's as bad as mine, Jeff.
I better be writing some of this stuff down.
And you expect, um, the volume to be increased during construction?
It'll be a bit higher during construction, Cat, um, but I'm sorry. Commissioner called, well, I should be more official here, I apologize.
Don't give her that right, then everybody else has that right.
A lot of people call me Cat, it's okay.
But a normal twenty years operating the mines, expect to do that.
I am not the one, that our infrastructure specialist is uh, Jordan Nielsen. Uh, Jordan, Kyle, Deb, probably it'll be the ones in front of you. Talk to him about all of those, that is his specialty, he knows exactly what, how much increase in traffic on that road, those studies have all been completed, he has that data.
Okay, thank you.
Housing, this is the one I disagree with the most. And let's talk this through. Perpetua has provided forty-five thousand of the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council to support a regional housing professional housing study and executive director position. Pursuant to the community agreement dated November thirtieth, Perpetua is providing annual funding for the Stibnite Foundation throughout operation amounting to at least nine point six million and three hundred perpetual shares to be used toward community goals such as housing, childcare, and transportation. Again, that's not controlled by the county in any way. I mean, that mayor may be spent on housing, may not be spent on housing, we just have no control over that whatsoever. So I don't think that that speaks to the housing conversation. I do support the forty-five thousand of the EDC because that did help support the housing study, which that housing study states right now. which that housing study states right now, before the mine comes in, that we're fifteen to seventeen hundred units behind. So we already know that we are severely impacted on housing in the valley. Within the first year of construction of the project, perpetual will provide onsite housing for project employees, contractors, consultants and visitors while working at the project site to include up to one thousand eighty beds. During construction and up to six hundred beds during operation, along with meal services, a commissary, laundry and housekeeping, wifi and recreational facilities at an estimated cost of a hundred thirty-one million to construct the facilities, five point eight million annually during project construction, three point nine million annually during project operations. While I understand that this is a large expense for perpetual at the mine site, that does nothing to satisfy the CP requirement of local housing. Because we talked specifically, it specifically says that we will enter into an agreement to mitigate impacts to community housing. Has nothing to do with mine site. So I absolutely disagree that that in any way satisfies the CUP requirement for housing.
Um, I'd like to ask a question here real quick, uh it's vague to me. It says to be used toward community goals such as, such as housing, childcare and transportation. What is community?
Under number two, you're talking about for the community agreement?
Yes.
West Central Mountains?
It is the entire, so it would be the region of the community agreement, which is council to Riggins, through McCall up to Yellow Pine to Cascade. That is what is considered the community agreement region.
So it covers a good bit of area.
Those communities all appoint a representative every year to sit on the foundation board. There is an annual granting cycle. That board determines where those funds are gonna be given each year. Those funds have to be utilized within our region.
We don't control that at all.
On purpose.
I know that.
Yeah, obviously, totally separate. And again, I, full disclosure, I helped write it. I'm, you know, I'm proud to have done that.
Let me ask a question. If a developer comes in and says, you know, he sees what's going on in the area, he sees this mine coming in, there's opportunity here and he wants to put in either houses, apartment complex, blah, 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 whatever. And that money been used to help build those, or is that totally separate?
It has to go to a nonprofit.
This goes nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just getting it clear in my head.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
So the last project, then I have some thoughts, then we can all talk about it. Perpetua will provide a total of five hundred thousand to the West Central Mountains Economic Development Council, paid in annual installments of fifty thousand each for three years of construction and for seven years of operation in the project for the council's use to support workforce and business development in the region. That has nothing to do with housing. I don't know why that's even under housing. That is a workforce development um conversation, doesn't have anything to do with housing.
Unless they chose to take that path. So those funds are there for EDC to use as they see fit.
And we need to take off the use to support workforce and business development in the region. Cause it was specifically called out.
I actually like this. I think we really need to focus on workforce development within the county.
I agree with that.
I think that moving towards small engines, welding, CDL programs. So I guess I wondered if there was any flexibility there. Some other really good workforce development programs that are in process here within the county. Um, McCall School District has a CDL program. That's fantastic. I know so many students that have come out of high school with a CDL. And then like the current FFA programs that are here. Does all that money have to go to West Central Mountains, or can it be distributed throughout the county for other workforce development programs?
So in my mind, that's what the Stibnight Foundation is for. Because the foundation is there to assist the county with those kinds of programs.
But I don't think they're getting the type of they're not getting five hundred thousand dollars to really push the programs forward. And I feel like those are the workforce. I guess I'm just concerned that it's gonna go to the Economic Development Council. And I struggle to see how it's really gonna be put into workforce development, how it's gonna affect people within the county. Like what kind of programs are they gonna do?
So um I recently invited Lindsay Harris, who is the executive director for that organization, down even to me with state agencies, uh workforce development, labor, uh small business and commerce, to start talking about just that. How do we bring this workforce training here? How do we potentially um purchase a vehicle so that the CDL programs at McCall Donley can actually do the testing here at home instead of having to go outside the region? So those conversations are absolutely happening, Catlin, um in order to bring that training here to this region. And I think EDC is the place with which we do that. We continue to work with the schools and building out their uh CTE programming and then work with the EDC to try to get everybody working together to get that programming up here.
So so you'll have very strict parameters around this. Rather than some of the other activities that EDC participates in?
That is currently the way it's drafted. I mean, that's we're we're interested in your feedback on that. Um, it's it's like maybe, you know, you're unsure about how you want that directed, but that is currently what it says. Um, I've done quite a bit of work with Commerce for other companies that are citing large projects in Idaho right now. And they have a very sophisticated workforce development team at Commerce. I don't know if you know them, have worked with them, but especially with Micron's expansion, they added even more opportunities within the last two years. And so they have a very robust set of programs. And the governor was keen on making sure that those programs serve rural areas at the same rate or more than urban areas. And so he uh made sure that those programs were were um diverse to serve a lot of different industries. So um I I have had recent success with them, so I I would support, you know, what Belinda just said, that 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 is a good avenue.
The only thing that I like about it is BSU Sustainability Program, the end of the month, there's a whole three-hour session on education and partnering together with the school districts on how to re um redirect funding in this region for, you know, school-specific projects. And so the EDC is our only regional council, if you will. So if this is drafted this way, maybe we could put not only workforce and business development, but educational support, you know, talk some way about getting some CTE classes at the schools with these funds too. And because I think that that's gonna be part of the conversation, we also have state liquor funds. We're working to see if those state liquor funds, we have to spend a portion of those on education and maybe we can redirect some of that into CTE classes also.
Uh-huh, and if you all don't know, we just did twenty, um, excuse me, um, forty K to McCall Donley for CTE programming two years ago, forty K last year to Cascade. We're doing twenty K to New Meadows, Riggins Council uh for their CTE programming. We will continue to support our schools as we have historically to help build out those programs. Count, but you know, one of the things always in my job, I say is until we keep our youth home and allow them to have family wage jobs, we are never gonna have a vibrant region. And so we want to continue to focus on that as well.
Yeah, they they need to be able to have a living wage here.
Absolutely.
Or lose it.
Perhaps the placement of that provision belongs better under education.
I would agree with that statement. So on the housing front too, I I think it would be very helpful to do some kind of an ongoing, maybe biannual housing needs assessments. Let's see how it really is impacting and then mitigate according to that. Put in a good faith clause. That was Cindy's word, just give her credit. A good faith clause uh to mitigate housing impacts as they present. And so really over the next ten years, that's, you guys are gonna be building up five-year window. We're gonna know a little bit more. But as we grow into this, maybe a biannual look, and if we see all of a sudden we're twenty-five hundred units behind, then on a good faith basis, we're gonna go in and try and mitigate that impact. Cause we disagree on the fact that you guys think everybody's gonna be back at that mine. I absolutely don't think that that's factual. I think that people are gonna take one look at this area and go, I can go back there for two weeks and then I can come out and live on this valley floor with my family. And I think people are gonna make that choice. Um, so we will see.
It'd be, it'd be nice from our perspective if some of them are able to do that. That would bring some nice high wages to the valley and support businesses. And so, you know, that's, that's something that we hope they're able to work into. If we, if we had something like um that, you know, housing is is further impaired by twenty-five hundred units, how would that? How would you be able to know that that's due to perpetual? I mean, you've got a housing crisis that exists before, as you've noted. And you're not the only community in the state that has that. Out of all the communities though where I cite projects, I have seen very few that provide onsite heights, housing. And so it is a powerful tool for keeping their their employees housed. And um, you know, it, other communities that have tried to address this catch them, you know, is in a similar boat, right? Especially after COVID. You know, they have different ways that they've allowed this and in onsite housing is one of them, right? They have different ways that they permit or give incentives to address this. So um, it it can be a very powerful assistance to communities. But in the end, our our goal is that there are, it is part of that workforce development, right? That they are adding valuable members of the community ultimately, and that will happen over time as houses are available and they qualify and they're able to find and work into those. In the meantime, perpetual has come up with a way to address their employees' needs, not just through housing, but services to like wrap around services for them. Um, so that they are not impacting your services directly um in the same way that somebody just moving to the community would.
So I think
I'll break all those down for you.
Sure. I mean, you know, and and obviously that's just a different point of view than you espoused about the the onsite housing, but we do believe it, it creates a really positive impact too.
Sure, and I agree with the positive impact. I think it's a huge economic benefit to Valley County and why I haven't fought the mine. And I also think it's a huge benefit in order to do the reclamation back there and why I haven't fought the mine. However, I am going to fight on the housing conversation because when Tamrac came in, we also require them to build employee housing and they have that. However, there's a lot of people that don't like that type of housing and now are housed on the valley floor in rental units. It has been a huge driver about uh and taking up the availability of some of our housing. As they've grown, so too has our housing shortage. They on their behalf have added um six hundred beds out there now, I think, is what they have. So they've done their employee housing also onsite. They're closer to the valley floor. They do impact us in other ways. Businesses are supporting through growing their own housing. Shore Lodge does it. Rundus is starting to do it. Businesses are creating housing on their own. You're also a business. You are creating housing for a part of the family unit. The rest of that family unit is gonna live somewhere on this valley floor. And there, I think that there's a very large conversation to be had about that happening. Um, is it an economic benefit? Sure. But you're also opening a huge business all at once. It's not natural growth that would occur in the valley. You're also going to be bringing in, we also know that there is a huge number of businesses that are looking to move here to support the mine. They're also gonna have employees. They're gonna have people that move into this area. That's gonna take away any housing supply that we currently have. We can't build our way out of this because every single time an affordable unit even comes up, it's snatched up by somebody that wants to put it into the short-term rental market. So we are unique in everything that we do. Haley's issue, the way that they're getting out of it, is all of their business community puts funding behind their housing trust. So the business community has come together and funded one way out of that. So that's another avenue. I asked for funding for the housing trust for an employee. That was only an idea. I don't care if that's the direction we go or not. That's one way to help mitigate. I think there's other ways to help mitigate. We're trying to keep costs down. I don't even know what affordability looks like. But I do know that your team is going to be able to afford housing sooner than most of our locals that will be here to help support that mine. So the grocery workers that are here in town and we're going to have to expand, hopefully to help support all of this, those grocery workers don't make anywhere close to eighty-seven thousand. So your guys are gonna be able to afford housing sooner than that grocery clerk does. We have to mitigate that impact somehow. So is that, you guys doing an apartment building? Is that creating some kind of a, of a fund so that as units are built, we help pay the sewer hookup and the water hookup? Or we help um improve a recreation uh, one of the sewer districts piping so that people can actually go out and build on some of these units? I mean, nobody can make the stuff pencil in Donley because of the infrastructure updates. There's costs.
Fire County has the infrastructure issues currently.
Already, before you guys ever come.
Exactly right.
And so you're gonna add to it. Alls I'm asking is mitigate your portion of it. And I'm trying to point out where I feel like, and these guys can jump in. I'm one of three. But I've spent the last fifteen years on housing in this industry, or in this valley. I'm very familiar with our current issues that we have and what you're going to add to it. And this is our opportunity to try and mitigate that for the county. And that's what I'm doing.
I guess I'm gonna disagree a little bit on this. Um, I I think perpetual is coming out with a lot of mitigation system impacts. And I don't see that the mine coming in is is going to really detrimentally affect our current housing situation. Our current housing situation is that we're in is because of short-term rentals. There's how many on the valley floor? Twelve hundred that we know of? Um, the county's permitted over four hundred. Over four hundred. So that's a third, that's a quarter of the houses that we need. Um, I think that's the bigger challenge to our housing. Those are taking over what would s- what would normally be a single-family home. Um, when you drive five places, and I get it, Cascade is a lot different than Round Mountain, Nevada. But you don't see big communities around it because they really do go in and they go out um for those two weeks. I think people within the valley have, are gonna have the same opportunity to go work back at the mine as everyone else. Um, I just, while I think that know that housing is a really big challenge, I think that if possibly, if it was me as a business owner, if I'm going to face housing my people, I'm gonna build my own building and put them there. Um, and I think that's what most businesses would do. I would think, I feel that housing is, needs to be handled on um a business side of thing, not a government. So I think we can talk about possible um ways to mitigate it, but I think there's other options and there's still a lot of lots out there for sale around here that are um that are bare and are hurting some locals as well because stuff isn't selling. Um, so I think that that could be beneficial um for the county. I just struggle with putting so much um, putting a burden on one company like this. When it's, the housing issue is much bigger, much grander with many more factors. And I think that actually, if people are choosing to live here, it's a free market. Um, and they're gonna bring in some really good, good um other employees, you know, maybe for schools. They're gonna put kids in our schools, which increases our numbers. Um, so I don't see people moving to the valley floor a bad thing. I actually think it will help. Um, so I don't see people moving to the valley floor a bad thing. I actually think it will help.
However, you know, for me, I, I looked through the world from a construction eye. I've been in construction thirty-five, forty-some years now. And um, I'll never forget when Michelle Basie, our realtor gal, came in here and spoke to us one time. She says, problem is not supply and demand, it's not having enough supply on the ground. And she says, once we get it there, that's when the price will come down and people can afford it. Made good sense. I appreciated what she had to say and I told her that. But um, for me, if I was a developer and I see a perpetual mine coming in. You know, that's a big deal, kinda like Tamrec Resort coming in. I mean, they're looking at opportunities and they're looking at, okay, I can bring in grocery store, I can bring in housing. I can bring in apartment complexes. A developer's gonna look at what he can do. Make a buck, that's what they do. But that also brings in a component of helping the community. At a cost, I get that. But Sherry's dead on right about the infrastructure that now. Here's a struggling community that only has so much resource of sewer and water. Whether it's Cascade or Donley or Tormacall. And then, you know, North Lake that's out there. These are units that have not tried to even bother to grow and get their. Expansion like they should have all these years. And now all of a sudden they're gonna be hit with, oh, here's developers gonna be coming in, we better step up to the plate. Um, yeah, you guys are gonna impact that. And it's just like in our impact fees, we have to really look at that. How's this gonna impact our schools? MS Fire, please. I mean, there's, there's a lot of it that we really got to make sure that we're not putting in here. You know, I don't expect you guys to fix it all, but I expect you guys to be a big help on it. And that's, I think that's why we're sitting here having this discussion. But uh, I believe the developers that are out there, they're looking at this. You know, they're gonna come in and these people that are working at the mine, if I was gonna go to work up there right now. I'm gonna make eighty-seven thousand, which is pretty good pay. I would have be looking at, I could do this for a career. I could live in Valley County where I can go hunting. On my days off if they let me get, have a day off. And I'm right here. I mean, it's very attractive. I mean, how could it not be?
It's a beauty. We live in a beautiful place. You are correct.
We do.
But I guess. With demand as we have, I guess right now in my mind. We have so many retirees coming to this region. And they're the, a lot of them are the ones that are doing the um, VRVO type properties. We don't need more of them. We need workforce here. And as those folks start affording and buying homes, that's when prices are gonna drop. Demand ultimately brings the reduction in price.
Oh, supply brings the reduction in price, not demand. Demand drives it.
The demand creates the supply, which then creates the reduction in prices. Our grocery store people, you're right Cherry, are not gonna be able to afford a home. It will probably always have to be in an apartment. Not to be blunt, but that's not perpetual's problem. If it had all of these communities stayed on top of their infrastructure over the last number of years. Probably wouldn't be in the infrastructure position that we are today. Because those hookup fees and the expectations on those developers is what's making these, these projects not pencil. And so I just don't see how you can put that on perpetual. I myself just recently had to buy a home. I had to wait until I could purchase that home and qualify. All of these people are gonna have to go through the same process. They're gonna have to find a builder that can build. They're gonna have to get a county law and put in septic and sewer because there aren't resources at the city level. I just, you all know my stance, perpetual should do their fair share. I, on the housing piece of it, I really struggle. I've been at the table with you Cherry for twelve years. No one has figured it out. This is not, perpetual is covering up their housing for their employees.
Uh, workforce, workforce housing, how many units are you planning to build?
We'll have upwards of a thousand eighty during construction. That will go down to five fifty to six hundred beds during operations.
And that's pattern near the mine site, correct?
It's on our mine site.
Site and um, all on private parcel or would that be?
Um, the housing facility, I think it's on Forest Service land, but it's all part of our record of decision.
Forest Service, okay. All on Forest Service property? So you won't be paying property taxes on the land, but you would be on the, on the improvements.
On Forest Service land?
I don't know, maybe that's a question that we need to resolve is the.
That's my understanding, yes.
Taxable, the taxable value of the improvement would be paid to Valley County for the improvement. But not obviously on the, on the parcel itself since it's federally owned.
Okay.
This is the question you asked earlier that we'll just confirm, but that is my understanding.
Um, and then, and there won't be building permits issued, I understand, because it's on Forest Service. Did that get resolved?
Uh, we welcome the county's direction on that. Um, in your code, you have a, um, a general provision to issue building permits. It sounds like the, the county might prefer not to do that based on our conversations with Cindy, but you know, pending your confirmation of that. Due to cost. Um, so it's within your power to make that decision to not require them. In which case we would hire a private inspector.
Well, if it's on Forest Service ground legally.
We have jurisdiction questions or is, I mean, there's ongoing issues that we need to, to resolve with that. But these are, um, I just wanted to clarify for purposes of mitigating impacts. Um, that there's some unique, there's some unique factors related to this project that you don't see. With other uh, other projects down in the valley floor.
That one's very further conversation. I'd like to respond, uh, Catlin, to some of your comments. Um. So I think vacant lots sit there for a number of different reasons. I think some of it is people are gonna retire here, you know, we bought lots up here before we actually moved here. So there's a lot of ownership out there on those vacant lots that our people are preparing for uh, coming here in the future. I don't think that we have that many subdivisions that are just sitting out there that are vacant right now. And the cost of land is exorbitantly higher than it was ten years ago. So our locals cannot even participate with buying ground and putting something on it because of that. And most of the time in a community, I mean, I've done a lot of economic development for the communities in which I've lived, just as a volunteer. Most of the time when you get businesses moving in, they are contributing funding back to that community. They're paying a city tax, they're paying, you know, uh, sales tax, that type of thing. Most mining receipts are sent elsewhere. The state's gonna benefit, feds are gonna benefit. I, I question how much Valley County is really gonna benefit financially from having that mine back there. And so I look at it like we have a company that I know when the permit was originally issued, gold was eight hundred fifty dollars an ounce. That's what they have their profitability on. It's now four thousand dollars an ounce. They're gonna take a lot of money out of this community over the next seventeen years. And I don't think that it's um, is a negative thing for us to ask. That you participate in helping resolve some of the issues that are gonna come from this. I do think that you are going to seriously impact our housing. So if we don't do anything else other than agree that a biannual housing needs assessment needs to occur. And that there's a good faith clause in there that we will mitigate if we see the impacts. We don't have other large companies coming here right now. So it would be a pretty easy lift to say that this is coming from the perpetual mine. Um, and all of the surrounding businesses that are gonna come here in order to support the mine. It's not just about the mine. It's about the thirty inquiries that we've had for businesses to move here and support. You know, we are gonna see an increase in business. There's good and bad to that. Does that business hang around after you've closed the mine site? Hopefully. Hopefully in the next seventeen years, we will grow around them and it will support them and they can find financial um, capacity after the mine leaves. But in the meantime, we have to be able to support all of that moving here. And if we take a look back and just say, yeah, the community should have been doing a better job of their infrastructure, I hundred percent agree with that. But they didn't. And so now we're at a crossroads of, we know what's coming down the pike right now. And how do we try and mitigate that impact to our region? That's what our jobs are, is to mitigate impact. So how can we agree that there is going to be an impact and resolve some of this impact? Do I think we hold Midas or perpetual totally responsible for it? No. But I do think that they're a major player at the table because I think that right now, would we be having this growth without the mine conversation? I think it would be a more naturalized growth.
And, and Chairman, I think that, you know, we, we do see that as a positive, right? That economic development growth, those businesses are going to also be hiring, they're gonna be locals, they're gonna be putting kids in your schools. Those are not retirees then, those are actual workforce opportunities. And they're also paying taxes when they're on your valley floor on private property. And so those are, those are going to contribute through impact fees. And I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Thompson with you that this is.
We don't have impact fees.
This is the time to start looking at that because you, you predict that this flow is coming. We hope so. We hope that we're part of an economic development machine that turns on, you know, actual workforce and investment here. And so it's a great time to be looking at um, impact fees for development to capture some of that. Regardless, you capture it through property taxes and so you have opportunities there. And we think that's very positive. Um, and, and perpetual with the wages that they're paying. And as, you know, as Belinda said, as these people are able to work into buying homes, they're not displacing people who currently are here. Who already can't afford those lots, right? I think they will spur additional development. They'll be able to pick up the lots that are sitting there for sale. Um, eventually as they're able to move into this area and commit to this area. That's gonna take a long time, you know, based on their housing feasibility study that they did. They don't expect um, construction workers to move here immediately. They don't expect mine workers once operations start to come here a hundred percent. And so that is gonna give the valley time to grow in. Um, and because of that gradual moving in, even if we don't agree completely on, you know, how much of that will come. There will be some gradual impact. You're gonna have growth that's natural. That's occurring because of this economic development opportunities, that's just happening because people love this valley, like it's been happening for the last five years. And I don't know how you would distinguish that from perpetual. So I, I think, you know, I don't, uh, perpetual has funded studies in the past. They've never, you know, shied away from learning more. But I think as Belinda's pointed out, over a long period of time, there haven't been ready solutions presented of how, this is how you mitigate. These impacts to the county. Onsite housing, taking care of their employees is the most direct thing we can do. Um, it's the most uh, measurable and direct and they're putting a ton of resources behind it. Um, so it'll, it'll be desirable housing unlike the Tamrec situation that you described. The wages are higher than Tamrec's workers, right? So the overflow is not gonna impact the valley in the same way. So um, where, it's not that we are ignorant of the county's current situations. You know, we just have a different view of the positive impacts we bring versus the negative.
I sat at this table when we did this CUP and the conversation was we will mitigate housing on the valley floor. I will not sign this unless, my vote will not be to sign this unless we mitigate housing on the valley floor. So we need to come up with some ideas to get my vote.
Ask one more.
So on.
I will ask one more question just to clarify a few facts. Um, the logistics facility, how many full-time employees do you expect to?
Forty-five to fifty.
Forty-five to fifty. And will those employees that report to work there? Will they be housed at the onsite housing at the mine? Or is there some other option for housing for those employees?
So those employees, it's a more Monday to Friday, eight to five kind of job. So we anticipate most of those positions will potentially come from local employment.
Here in the valley.
Exactly.
Alright, sorry.
Who's the logistics? Is that the geologist, you know, checking all this?
We will have some accounting and HR, li- um, a logistics team. Currently, it's the small assay lab. Um, those are really the positions I might have, my offices might be at that location. So more on the ground, kind of like I said, more Monday to Friday kind of positions.
Can be a new facility or is it?
It will be.
Will be. And if they can abandon this one out here at Donley?
I don't think so, but I don't know that for sure.
In, in terms of the workers that you house onsite, it, it will be mandatory that they take perpetual um. Transportation to and from.
That is correct.
They cannot drive themselves in.
We'll have probably a um, upper management positions that might have to come and go. They would be the only ones that would drive their cars. Most of the work stuff that's the two weeks on, two weeks off is going to all be bust.
You know, I, I do like Sherry's idea that, uh, your biannual. I mean, it, it's just like anything else, just like we just dealt with the, like short disposal. You know, you have to look at this on an annual basis. How are we doing? Where are we at? What's changing? And I think a biannual review of, of, you know, looking at the contracts and looking at what's going on, how's this working? I think that's a very smart idea on all of our parts to look at this, cause things change.
You all have requested uh, quarterly updates through construction. And then by annual, once we're in the operational phase, so I think that's fair.
Yeah, well, I think it is.
And, and that's in the agreement now.
I used to do that.
We probably should have had two hours. So we may have to come back and finish this or if you guys are all in agreement, we'll just push through this and move past our. Our time of three fifteen. We got another six pages.
Well, maybe you could tell us now if you've got particular concerns on the other section, since we knew you wanted to talk about housing, you said, but um, that's helpful.
Concerns on the emergency response. Um, I think, first of all, I think we need a totally separate agreement as discussed in the CUP. We need something that actually shows the mitigation to the emergency services. This is. To me, there's a few things that perpetual has done here. Um, but I'm questioning, you know, an annual payment of five thousand of the county for a first responder. Um, I think that. I, five thousand, I think we're gonna need two more sheriff's deputies back there.
So the five thousand is specific to the hazmat trailer? And it's just maintenance fee to help resupply if they have to utilize their hazmat trailer. And I base that, Cherry, those numbers off of the fact that Valley County has had to utilize perpetual's hazmat trailer. On Payette Lake a few times. Um, and we have, we have never charged to resupply. What they have utilized, but felt that five thousand a year would probably be sufficient to resupply. Whatever they might need to use.
So have you had conversations yet with this sheriff's department in search and rescue?
I have had numerous conversations with uh, Valley County Sheriff. Um, historically, of course, it was Patty. Uh, she never had concerns until just this last few weeks. Sheriff Capery didn't have concerns for the most part because we will have our own security onsite. Um, our contractors will have somebody at, at, with all of their team of people. Um, we have had very, very. Um, we have had very, very little need for any law enforcement. In the thirteen years I've been doing this, I believe there has been one incident where law enforcement was called. Um, because somebody. Um, I believe was high on something. I I don't know what. Anyway, our team responded, diffuse situation, detained that individual until law enforcement could arrive. So in my mind, we have not shown that there is any need really to add additional officers. As a result of this project. Again, I do agree if we do a biannual update and review to make sure things are going well. If in fact the county can demonstrate to us that in fact calls have gone up due to this project. Absolutely, let's talk at that time. But to to think or hypothesize that you may need something. I just, I, because of our own security teams, I just don't think that the need is going to be there. Perpetua has worked very closely with search and rescue. Anytime search and rescue has needed perpetua's help, perpetua is there to support and and assist. I I suspect that will continue.
We're gonna have the size of a small city back there though.
That is correct.
And your security people cannot issue a citation.
That's correct.
So every single time we gotta issue a citation, you gotta have a police officer back there.
You have to remember, we don't have people driving. Right, they're gonna be on buses.
And a thousand and eighty beds all on a. I can see fights like none other.
I have to trust our projects team who has done this as a career. And they assure me that those situations are handled onsite. Um, we have zero tolerance policies. So, you know, in the situation that did occur, that individual was let go immediately by that contractor. Escorted outside of the region, he moves back to where he came from. Um, I I just, they indicate to me that they do not believe that this is going to be an issue.
Yeah, I talked to some of the guys up there that day, the dog and pony show and, you know, the very professional way the guys handled every. Part of where everybody was and how they were interacting. And it's, and I'm not a what-if person, you know? If an issue comes up and you guys say, hey, we're starting to have trouble up here. Then the county will say, okay, maybe we oughta put some more, you know.
Resources.
Police officers back there. But until that comes up, I don't, if you people feel like this is your program, this is your show. We leave it alone, we stay out of your way, because I don't wanna micromanage anything. If the need arrives, then we're here and we'll address it then.
I'm not the sheriff, I would like to see something in writing with the sheriff's office on what they're requesting. I just think that the conversation is outside of this.
I knew that you invited him to be part of this discussion, is he here?
He's not in the room.
I would have thought he would have.
He told me he was coming.
To this, prior to this, have already issued, had had already communicated to you what he believes he needs.
That's what I mean, until the last three weeks, I've, it's been crickets. There has been no concern at the law enforcement level.
I'll leave that as open until we get something back. You were talking about annual reimbursement of the actual costs incurred by the county over the Cascade Rural Fire Department for emergency response costs related to the project. That exceed insurance payments.
We would do the same, Sherry, so that you know that that also applies to any sheriffs, so law enforcement need. If we have to have an officer go respond, we would absolutely res- um. Pay it for that officer to have been out of the valley floor.
And that covered Donley fire as well, because like if Cascade's on a call, sometimes Donley has to respond.
For sure.
So could we add?
We, it, we don't even have to put a city specific, we can just say fire EMS.
Be upon whoever's going back there to track that and provide some kind of an invoice. We probably should break that down somehow on how that's tracked.
So when I spoke with Carrie from an EMS or uh Chief Hall. Um, both of them said they track that by putting the information into the insurance system anyhow. So they didn't feel it would be any more time consuming to just let us know what those balances were. Because I asked if they thought it would require more staff hours and they told me no.
So what does exceed insurance payments mean? I mean, somebody's gotta pay premiums. So are you talking about like Cascade fires insurance? Or like if I'm an individual and I get hurt and my insurance is paying, you'll pay something on top of the premium, I didn't understand that comment.
The idea is just to make sure that we're covering out of pocket costs that would be attributable to um something at perpetua.
The county or to one of the fire districts?
Exactly, so that they're actual out-of-pocket costs, so not paying you more than it costs. Because if you got insurance money back for it, um and you pay those premiums regardless. We don't expect a lot of calls, as Belinda said, but if there is one, we wanna reimburse you.
Okay, do we have to have extra kinds of insurance at all to go back to the mine and do anything? Search and, you know, EMS wise or because there's hazardous materials back there, we don't have to have certifications or anything different or?
We will be required from a mining perspective to have our own hazmat teams. We will have to have paramedic level or or higher. So we will have an urgent care onsite. RN or PA level or above will be onsite at all times. Um, and we have offered the, to do joint hazwapper training with our local region. Uh, fire departments, because it sounds like our teams will be higher qualified than our local. Fire EMS team, so.
That's what I was wondering if we were gonna have to bring somebody up to speed.
We will absolutely provide training to the region.
Because we don't know what we don't know, again, I think we need a good faith clause in there that says that we'll continue to monitor and mitigate as needed.
So maybe it would be helpful to just turn quickly to those provisions, since it comes up each time, just to make sure everybody's aware of where that is in the agreement. Um, and so it's under, um, I find the right page. Um, on page seven, if it's printed out the same way, I assume, but that is under additional terms, section two B. Um, that is where it says that perpetua and county will meet at least quarterly during construction and semi-annually during operation of the project. To discuss current project activities, actions taken in accordance with this agreement and any questions or concerns. And then further under C three. Uh, under cooperation, it is the party's intention to encourage, promote and aid the project. So that the opportunities and positive community impacts of the project are fully realized. In the event either party has concerns, questions or issues regarding this agreement or the working relationship of the parties. Parties will work together in good faith to seek resolution. The parties recognize that resources and needs within the community may change over time. And that changes to this agreement may be needed to address new or changed circumstances and or to redirect committed funds. Any newer amended terms discussed and agreed to by the parties will be addressed and added to this agreement. So we tried to build in that flexibility to reflect the discussions.
Please make note of that, make sure that that covers our bases. Okay, recreation. Um, it talks about buying a piston bully machine. Dave, did we already buy that? I thought we already bought that machine and have one delivered up there.
No, we don't have a a machine up there right now. Um, we've been talking about this agreement is that perpetua would probably end up leasing a machine the first year for us. And then we would have the option to buy lease out after that. I was in a capital, I think you were talking about the capital improvement request from two years ago.
I thought Larry said we were getting something delivered in transport.
That was for Clear Creek, wasn't it?
Uh, we got a new cat for Cascade this year, that was from the state of Idaho.
Yeah, so that was a piston bully one hundred.
Oh, and he was taking that one up there.
He would tran- my understanding, Sherry, is for years they have transported the Cascade machine. With a couple of staffers and fuel out to to groom that area. We didn't want them to have to continue to transport because that was costing the county about twenty thousand a year, just over twenty thousand. Uh, and so we felt that area having their own machine to really develop that riding area would be better.
I really thought though that Larry had told us before he left that they took that Cascade machine and put it out there.
It it just goes back and forth.
I know, but if he's replaced the one here in Cascade, we had.
That one goes, that one goes back to the state to be resold.
Oh, okay, alright.
Those are, those are Idaho Department Parks and Recreation machines.
Okay.
So they give us a new one to use for a three-year, four-year cycle and then they take them back.
So we get a machine for year one and then what is the cost after that? Is it two hundred thousand a year, we're not gonna be able to afford that?
It's supposed to be a matching grant. So what Larry indicated to me is that a new machine is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. There is plenty of grant, match, grant funding if we would supply the match. And so we supplied the match.
So you're putting two hundred thousand then toward grant match.
Correct.
To get a piston bully.
And as Dave mentioned, this first year, we will lease a machine. Um, it'll be a little bigger machine than than what will be used on the alternative snowmobile route. Once that can be opened, so.
Yeah, cuz this is a PB one hundred, which is only ten foot wide.
Exactly.
So. That'd be for Cabin Creek and all that area. But you're talking about a bigger machine.
For this first year.
The first year.
Yep.
Okay.
Dave, did you see anything in the recreation, I sent that to you to review? There to be changed or added or?
Uh, no, I think, you know, honestly, most of the questions are the uh input that I have probably would fall under a road agreement. Component, once that gets developed. Um, one of the things I did see in there was, well, one of the things I guess I would like to say is like. This is a pretty narrow part of this agreement and maybe it would be worth having our recreation board take a look at it. And just say, is there anything else we're missing right now? I think that'd be a great topic for us and if, you know, Belinda wanted to come in and speak to the group in November, that would be a great opportunity.
That'd be great.
Um, the only other thing I saw in there is there's the line D, and I'm gonna switch hats for just a minute and put on my avalanche center fundraising hat. Um, it says that the agreement would fund an avalanche center in Idaho. Um, with the Payette Avalanche Center expanding right now, it would be awesome if that funding was dedicated for the the local avalanche center.
Payette Avalanche Center.
Um, but we will have more discussion, I thought that had to be the Forest Service, Dave.
It's just my two cents as director of the board for that organization.
No, no, but I mean, I thought you said that we would have to fund the Forest Service. Pack is under the Forest Service.
Not necessarily. That's the reason our organization exists, I s- I think I said that you guys would have to come up with an MOU or discuss with them what those funding needs actually look like. But that the funding mechanism for the Forest Service Avalanche Center here is primarily the nonprofit group.
Okay, so we, we will have an avalanche.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've got, we've, we've talked about this quite a bit and I'm comfortable that we can come up with some ideas for that.
All you guys discuss the verbiage on that then.
Chairman, if I can weigh in on that, just from a timing perspective. These conversations have been in the works for a long time. Um, recreation is not a required condition as far as the conditional use permit. Perpetua has offered to codify basically all of the commitments that they have made based on months and years of discussions. Um, into this agreement, um, really as a good faith gesture to include these other items. Um, the road agreement clearly will generate more discussion input, we welcome that. And um, and the conditions of approval here, but. We also need to get this wrapped up and so from a timing perspective. Our ideal was to get a direction from you today about very specific. Um, items that are of concern from conditional use permit, if any, and to resolve those. Um, I just heard, you know, Dave mentioned a November discussion. Um, we're looking for a decision just as soon as possible in October. Um, and it's because this is gonna help set in motion a lot of things that the company needs to move forward with. So that's my only concern, not the content, but the timing of what that sounds, starting to sound like, just a lot of, you know, piling on for additional time, so.
I wish we would have had more time to work on this, we've been asking for a while also. So now I feel like there's some pressure to get this done, I think it's more important that we get it right.
And the recreation could be, could also be removed from this, it doesn't need to.
What did the record of decisions state on recreation, because it was specific, uh, wasn't there part of the rod that it was? At, um, there would be a. There.
There's an alternative access, so perpetua had to provide alternative access and an alternative parking lot. And that in fact will happen. It cannot happen this year due to active lawsuits.
And that's part of the road agreement too.
Correct.
So will that be highlighted as a separate conversation then? Um, because if we're signing something now, it can't be put into place until later, how do we address that?
So it is part of the commitments that are in the road agreement, so they are committed to it.
Okay.
Um, so regardless, there's many commitments in here that are part of a future, you know, action. And so that's how that is um drafted there.
Waste, we've already talked about that. The annual payment of a hundred thousand of Valley County for general services. Is that, you know, I mean, there's gonna be a good faith on that too, we have absolutely no idea what to anticipate and what the costs are gonna be. So that might just be a part of that annual review to see what actual expenses were and we can maybe track that for the next year, but. Um. On the education portion of it. You guys are going to mitigate impacts, but what if there's a ton of people that move here and all of a sudden they need two new classrooms in Cascade? Have you addressed that with the?
They could say, yippee, that's what they would say. Um, in visiting with, absolutely, I have spoken with superintendents for years. Uh, McCall, of course, is tight. Um, but previous superintendent, and I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on what is. Not Jim.
No Eric.
Eric.
Eric. Um, had no concerns because of the part, we we have always partnered with these schools. Um. Lee would love, the Cascade would love to see a hundred new students at their school. So the gap funding is really. I, here's how I understand it, they take average daily attendance the beginning of November. And the state funding is based on how, whatever that average number is, and that's what the school gets from a funding perspective. If in fact there is a student that starts, let's say in December. We would pro rate the ninety-three, ninety based on the number of months of the school year. That the state is not providing funding for the school, we would supplement that.
Just a little perspective, having gone to school in Cascade. My cla- my graduating class was the last large class of, we were twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and they averaged ten to fifteen now. So that school can easily double. Annette knows it, Cindy knows it, cuz I graduated with both their sons, my class was the last large class to graduate.
And the facilities here will take that kinda growth.
Huge.
Okay, great. Uh, medical care, I think we've got that covered, power, additional comments, additional terms. Those are my main concerns. What do you guys have that you want to ask questions so we can?
I think a lot of mine, um, concerns are gonna come in the road agreement, considering I live uh two hundred yards off that road. Um, so I def- I'm looking forward to seeing the impact, the, how you're gonna mitigate impacts to traffic. In terms of this, I really like that you're partnering with Cascade Medical Center for the options up there. I'm always a big fan of supporting the independent hospitals, so.
Pretty sure.
And that'll lessen the burden.
So far, I'm good with a lot of this. Yeah, the impacts are gonna come. We know it. Yeah, that's uh. How do we bend and move with all those impacts and work with you guys and our communities? Alzina has been on our minds. Last ten years, we've watched uh this whole community exponentially get so expensive. It's. Totally ridiculous. It has nothing to do with the mine, nothing at all. It's just, here comes Boise and we got found and here's two great ski hills and wow, let's move up there and. Now my house is worth four times what I paid for it and it's like, oh, this is real fun. So we got, we've always had these issues all along and now we'll have an influx over the next three to five years. Because of a new business coming into the region. And yeah, that's just gonna put another uh flavor on this whole thing. How do we deal with? People that are gonna wanna move here that are gonna be living here. And uh, are you still gonna have people coming out of the valley, moving up? Oh, sure. We are. I mean, Micron, Meta. Those high paying places are gonna have people that come up here, I wanna build a second home. Hopefully they don't make a short term rental out of it. But um, it's coming. And just like that, we've gotta work with you guys on. And I like the idea of, you know, biannually or annually to talk about. Here's where we're at now. What do you guys think? I think that's gonna be very important. Communication is everything. Can we solve all the problems eventually, but it's gonna be a long term. It's not gonna happen overnight. And uh, I truly believe that. At least we have it all on the table and we all understand the issues and problems. How do we make them work? I don't know, but we'll get there. I truly believe we'll get there.
So I just have a quick question. Um, I think we forget that the wonderful community of Yellow Pine is in our county as well. And a lot of what we've talked about here today is valley floor issues. Can you just talk a little bit about what you're doing for, for the residents back there cuz obviously they'll be maybe the most heavily impacted? Cuz I don't see anything in the agreement that directly, except the helipad. Direct touches Yellow Pine, like, could they have access to your medical center in a emergency or?
So as of this moment, we have a separate agreement with the village of, uh, Yellow Pine. And predominantly funding and supporting lots of their events. Um, we assist with dust abatement. We assist with road work back in that area. I do not know. Tom Reinhardt is working with our team. I don't know that we can allow. Unless it's an emergent situation um for Yellow Pine to use that clinic. I don't know enough particulars around it. But it has been brought up in discussion, so I know they're having that dialogue. And so that's, I mean, we partner with them at every opportunity that we can, so.
I heard there's a casino gonna go in and.
Where I see the next thing that we will um hopefully partner with them on is their water system. So we are in discussion with their Water Users Board. And Merrick, who is the company that um is helping them re-engineer and build out. Their wellhouse. And so now having some conversation on distribution lines, but those agreements would be with.
That's good. We're gonna have a bridge. You can actually get across to it here pretty soon.
Their water system. I think the one thing that we're just not in agreement, I'm not in agreement with is the housing, so. Other than that, I think if we put in some of the annual reviews, mitigations, that type of thing. You know, how many people i- in past projects, how many of the locals have been able to buy property around their, around the project? Do you have that?
I have not, I've not ever looked.
I would think that'd be so low patient specific.
You know, Wells is, Wells is gonna look very different than here. Or maybe Minnesota or Arizona or I, I, I just, I don't know.
I just wondered if there was any of that information, so.
So just to make sure I captured everything, we'll, um, Brian will get you, I mean, I think we can make these changes immediately and get you a new draft for distribution. Under housing on uh B four, uh, we talked about relocating that to education. You liked the focus. That's currently stayed there with the workforce and business. Under C one, C two, which is about the reimbursement of emergency response costs. Will make that more generic to not be listed only the county in Cascade Rural Fire. Because you wanted to also make sure we're capturing Donnelly, so we'll make that more generic to be, um, you know, local law enforcement, fire EMS. And, and then we've already, we do have in there the um, the meetings and the cooperation, the biannual meetings, and so I know you're looking at that. So those are the two changes we heard to make. That we're in agreement with, so we'll, th- those are quick and easy. We'll get those right back out to you. And um, I guess just as a process, would it be possible to? Get back in front of you quickly or what is your desire for next steps? If those are, if those are the only outstanding issues and there's not more discussion to be had about those issues. But you know, are you giving us direction now for it to be signed with those two changes, understanding that, that you are not support? I, I'm just looking for timing and direction on process.
Do we want to look at, say, the twenty-second? We'll just. Getting this thing signed. Calvin won't be here next week.
What are you willing to sign on the housing? You wanna see changes to that housing or are you willing to sign the way it is?
I'm willing to sign the way it is. I've, I've gotta, I know this is gonna be an ongoing process. I can't ask them.
It's your only shot to do it.
There's, I don't know how to ask them to fix it, let me put it that way.
I don't think it's our only shot. This is a work, I think, with, with what Deb mentioned in there, that this is a working discussion. I think if we can come up with proof that Perpetua is having a serious impact. But in, in my work with South Lake Sewer. Mayor Judy has commented that Cascade has upwards of five hundred sewer hookups available right now. I think a lot of the infrastructure in the county is in trouble. But I actually think Cascade's fairly well suited and has just done some good upgrades. So I think that's a positive. But I think that if we're really seeing a challenge, we can come back to this document. And work through it.
I would also like to hear from the sheriff on anything that they want to include in this.
We fill about table until the twenty-second. We all good with that?
If not, it's gonna be one of us against the other one.
Can I just, again, clarify what the expectation is with the biannual review? What I hear, what the board wants in that biannual review is an opportunity to review and amend. This development agreement on a, on a regular basis, not just, uh, not just review and discuss. Is that, am I understanding that correctly and is that what you are willing, willing to do?
I'm like a living document or incorrect?
And then I would question also, I would question staff and you. So this CUP specifically states that they will enter into an agreement on housing and the other services. Does this agreement cover that CUP requirement?
Do we respond now?
I think it would cover the, the housing agreement if it specifically states that in this agreement. And if they bring up that they participated in the housing needs assessment as part of that. And then the, there will be the biannual, if they, if they make those changes and we specify that, I think that it would.
As far as mitigating impacts to housing, I think there's, there's a dispute amongst the parties about what the impacts are going to be. And I think admittedly at this stage in the process, that's somewhat speculative. But if we can review and reopen this agreement after a, a couple of years and reassess and reevaluate, then we'd have more real. Actual data, facts and, and, and numbers to talk about. I don't wanna speak for you, Commissioner Mop, and if that satisfies your concern or not. But I think that's the direction this agreement is going and, and.
As long as we document within this agreement that you're willing to pay for a biannual review, do a housing needs assessment every two years for the next ten years.
Every two years?
In that housing needs assessment, how will we know Perpetua's direct impact? To the other impacts of short term rentals, of second homeowners.
That would be up.
Businesses.
That would be up to the firm that's doing it. They will actually be interviewing, reviewing, talking to the mine. I mean, that will be their obligation to do that. I still won't sign it because I still don't think it mitigates, so. I know what the conversation was upfront.
If you, if you, if you, if it, could I respond to Brian? So, and you know, Perpetua will have to think about whether they wanna fund that additional study. Um, I, I think. You know, I think the challenge will be. It, it determining whether, you know, what the impacts are. And so I think that's also responsive to your question, Brian, so. I think this already says exactly what you just asked for, that it has not only an obligation to meet, but for both parties. To act in good faith to address concerns that come up. What it doesn't say is if there's an increase in housing in the valley, Perpetua will solve that problem, right? So I just wanna be very clear that this is about, you know, a good faith, and I think Commissioner Caldwell just said it very well a minute ago. That if, you know, we have evidence of impacts, that's what we'll be discussing, right? So that is, of course, what Perpetua has said all along through all of their conversations as they gathered this information and presented it to you. So there is a commitment and it is, it is part of this agreement um for Perpetua to come to the table and we're asking the same thing from the county. To come to the table in good faith to work through those issues and to amend it as needed. So that's, it, you know, to be, to be clear, that's not going as far as what you've asked for. And, but it's, but it is to really look at what is going on in the valley. Is there something that we're causing that we have not addressed that we should have addressed? And that's, that's what we're trying to get to with that cooperation provision.
I guess uh, we'll, we'll have to word Smith and I, I guess, you know, review and go is. Review as we go along, but uh, I just wanted to make sure just for. We're, we're talking about efficiency and, and the need to get this done quickly, probably better to clarify these questions now than. And have them pop up later, so.
Appreciate that. Hey, thank you.
So we'll be the twenty-second.
Do you wanna make a motion to? Take this till the twenty-second or?
So what timeline the twenty-second is available?
Three o'clock.
And then nothing scheduled after?
Uh, I ha- we have uh the opportunity for the public to present and there is an executive session for an evaluation. Remove that. So this will be.
Also, I wanna put on a presentation on the job sites sometime during that day. I'll be doing that every week until these projects are off my plate.
Do you wanna do it after the agreement or we have a, um, an opening at one forty-five for fifteen minutes or is it?
Hopefully by then the annex is done.
One forty-five.
Praise the Lord.
So the uh discussion decision approved, Perpetua proposed community development agreement is on the agenda for October twenty-second at three o'clock.
And make that motion. I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the feedback. Bench is just the most comfortable. Teachers at Cascade are worth though.
When we get a new desk here.
We need to, we need to make cushions. Maybe we need to charge the senior center with ladies making cushions for these.
We're working uh to find if we can find some for the courtroom cuz that's a, a complaint that we've heard for a while too, so if there is.
Senior centers would be willing to.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, up next.
Paul's here.
I don't know.
They are not coming in person.
So just a discussion, so they wanna know if they're being funded. We have the same situation with uh the transportation.
Concern with this one right now, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, is that technically the sheriff's office, if they have a animal that they. Detain during an arrest or a situation, there is not an existing agreement with McPaws that they can take that to McPaws. Now, I don't think McPaws would necessarily refuse, uh, but in the agreement. That is, that was in place, it also had uh that, that language to allow that. With the, um, the amount that the county is contributing.
Was it the end of September that it expired?
October, October, or September thirtieth. Is when it officially expires. All of the county agreements that we have, right? Typically go from September to October of the fiscal year.
Can we separate the two contracts?
That would be a decision for.
That would make a lot of sense because we absolutely have to have the sheriff's office to take animals.
They could take them to Keith, but.
And there, if they do take them to Keith, there probably should be an agreement with Keith as well because there was some concerns that uh, our. Cascade veterinarian wasn't getting compensated for.
Sometimes not open. I think McPaws is a more consistent, so I, I think it would be great to separate those two.
I don't know that McPaws will do that. They wanna know what their payment is before they're gonna end up agreeing with that, so.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Uh, one comment that was received uh from the director just recently is that. City of McCall contributes forty-two thousand a year and they take on less animals from the city of McCall than are received from Valley County. Uh, the statistics, recent quarterly statistics uh were provided by the director and distributed to the commissioners. I believe just yesterday is when I emailed that out. Uh, but that was a comment that the executive director had from McPaws.
On a side note, on the grant program, um, McCandie and I are right in the middle of it. We will have it launched, our goal is by November one. I don't like being held hostage over funding. I would prefer to see these two split.
Wonder if we could just do an expansion for like two months and commit, you know, what the previous, um, divide the previous. Pro rate it for two months.
And I, again, I don't wanna speak on behalf of McPaws. I don't think they're. I think they're just trying to get some direction of what the, what the county is willing to do. They did make a request for an additional contribution. Um, unfortunately, the agreement had, had lapsed. This was the first time that we've had a specific agreement. With McPaws to in fact take these type of animals. It did work in our favor. Uh, when we had that situation with the sled dogs, um, so is it needed? I, I guess we could argue that it is. Is that gonna happen every year? We could argue that it probably will not. With that said, uh, it is something that the commissioners ultimately need to decide on. Uh, I did uh a- advise that there was some concerns with the requested a signif- significant increase. Um, and the commissioners ha- uh would need to make a decision, uh, but I did also indicate that would, um, we would get it on. On an, on an agenda as soon as we could.
And I think, you know, we need to have the program in place. They need to provide that to us and we'll see how many grant requests we get and funding will be from there, so. I mean, Terry has the same concern on the transportation. Basically said, you're gonna get some funding. I just don't know what it's gonna be, but um, you know, transportation is important also. I think those are the two main ones, transportation and McPaws, that are probably gonna get their funding, but I don't see a significant increase for McPaws.
And it'll be very official with. And it'll be very official with the scoring rubric and you know, I think that if they show the need, which obviously transportation in this is a high need for the county. Then they're gonna score well.
So Doug, I guess that in the meantime, I would just see if they are willing to go ahead and accept and we're working on it and we'll go back to them and. You know, expect a application in November. We'll go back to them first of November for a full row lot of that grant program.
I'll reach back out to them.
If they're not, maybe we'll talk with Keith in the meantime and see if he'll take some and. All right, and then Commissioner Thompson, you're up.
Okay, yesterday I went and looked at Goldust. Shop is totally steel is up. Pearls are on the top and look like they had put their insulation on top. And they haven't started skinning. They haven't put any pearls around the exterior as of yesterday. But look like they're fixing to put tin up on top of the roof. Roof on because they had the installation rolled out of there already. That's all I know about Goldust. Stopped at the annex, looked at that, it's hundred percent painted out, which. Mr. Oki knows about because he's stuck. And that's what.
Did they get the basement painted too?
They got all that and. The millwork, which you trim base doors, all that's going in, started going in yesterday. So they're putting all that up. The cabinets were supposed to show up today. And so they'll be getting all that done over the next two weeks.
What about sprinklers?
Sprinklers are all done. All that system's finished. Now, there's not much left for them to do, but finish putting in the millwork and the.
How's the carpeting gonna hold up?
Carpeting looks really good. I mean, if you look at it, we have a whole bunch upstairs, leftover remnants. That they're gonna patch in any of the spots. So that's carpet actually looks pretty good shaded.
There's nobody in there, so.
Hardly nobody in there, but Michael feels like they're just right on time. They're gonna paint that's not out of place, get somebody in there to. Finish putting in new bulbs where the bulbs are burned out and.
All the drop ceilings are.
So that's, yeah, it looks like in two weeks they'll they'll make it. That was exciting to see that part. Yeah, once you see the paint, it's like, huh, now all you gotta do is nail some boards.
Terry is very concerned about moving DMV down there. I unfortunately she laughed and we forgot we were gonna talk about this. She thinks DMV should stay here until we get the parking lot redone. And I said, you have been working on that. You thought there would not be a problem with that.
Yeah, the parking lot is totally striped, in and out, everything's striped down there.
How many trailer parking spots are there?
Well, they didn't mark any of that, which is, they weren't told to do trailer parking area, which there there is one. Um, we could have them, I can talk to Michael and see if he can come back and have these guys, they only charge us six hundred bucks, something like that. And mark some trailer spots alongside that edge. Because there's plenty of room to swing around best behind the. What is that? Trash.
You got a big trailer you can make out?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You think we should just take my horse trailer and go double check?
You can do it.
You think we should put DMV parking or anything, you know, striped along the corner so people don't park where a big trailer would need to come in? Trailer parking only?
Good, I mean, trailer parking only. Uh, maybe put some signs up, but if they would mark that. Kind of like you see up there at a, oh, where is that? A horseshoe bin. Chevron station, big, long, white marks for guys with trailers could come in there, mark.
The only thing is gonna be covered by snow in a month. I mean, having the signs.
Would make a big deal.
More sense and then maybe next spring. The snow comes off, we paint it.
Then next spring, they'll be tearing up all the concrete and or concrete.
I think we need to get Terry back because she had some PPI concerns and. I don't want to rush it if the DMV is not gonna work down there because we can't not have a operating DMV.
I don't understand what she's talking about with the DMV.
We text her to come back? And they asked her to talk to Sue and get Sue here too if it was concerned, but.
Um, the other part. I met with Joe up there Tuesday, walked through it. They poured concrete today, the whole floor is poured. And they're supposed to be pouring the walls either today or tomorrow. Ten foot tall walls in there, so they're gonna pour all those guys and put the ballards in.
Because they're out of time on boring.
Oh, yeah. Monday, the blacktop's gonna go in, they're gonna put a two inch lift in.
I don't think they're ever gonna go in Monday.
I was watching the weather and and Josh said, he says, no way I'm gonna guarantee this. He says, we're just gonna put it in, let it get through the winter. We'll finish it.
They're talking about the DMV move. Okay, down there, so tell us your concerns.
Well, we still need to do the parking lot, right?
Well, we got it all, we got it all, uh, you know, we can't, we're not gonna be able to do any parking lot this year.
Right, my concern is, well, number one, are we gonna be able to really handle the amount? Foot traffic and vehicle traffic that those two often the assessors and DMV put, well, and buildings for that matter. That is my first concern with how the parking lot's set up right now. And my second concern is when we do actually do the parking lot. No one can get on there until we're done, right?
It's gonna be real fun.
It's gonna suck. It's gonna be horrible. It's gonna be horrible, so I'm like, okay, so how, I mean. I know DMV takes a lot to move. ITD has to move them and whatnot, so is that something that we could kick down the road? To alleviate some of the traffic? I did talk to Sue and she's like, I don't care, we can, we'll we'll figure it out, we'll work it out. But that was just my concern. It's not a stop all be all, just something that I wanted to bring up.
What was your PPI concerns?
Uh, PII? So that was ITD's concerns. The computers face towards the public. The window and then there's, I guess, so is that conference room gonna be a public conference room?
We'll have to have somebody back there that's a county employee with them.
Yeah, that'll be for like building apartment, you could go over plans with a contractor.
Okay, so yeah, so that was their other concern. There's a window there, so anybody walking by there could see it. And then on top of that, they didn't feel like they had enough storage space for what they have to have secured. I'm new to this, so please understand I'm I'm bringing concerns as I see them, so, because I'm gonna have to deal with this going forward.
Well, the window's easy. We can put a mirror tip on that window, so anybody in the conference room cannot see it. That's easy to deal with.
Window to the conference room.
It's to the hallway. Hallway and then the parking lot.
Walking by, I mean, can't they put a, you know, a screen? I mean.
We could figure it out, but those are just what ITD called out, so and we want to make sure that they're happy about it too.
The storage for what they have to have is a whole another conversation.
So it has to be concert, has to be controlled and locked. There, it can't be open storage, I believe. That's what I was getting from the ITD report.
I mean, ITD is a whole different animal, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, otherwise you can like go in there and get your own tags for your plates and not have to worry about paying, right?
I know that ITD is very particular. They make the employees themselves have background checks and. I don't think they'll allow us to go down there if there are, I don't think they'll let us go there if there's a single security concern.
Hey, now, let me ask a question. For Sue. Because it's connected to her office somehow. I I don't know the connection.
It's part of her division.
Part of her division. If we want to wait until we do this parking lot and leave them here, is that an issue?
Leave the assessors altogether?
No.
Just the DMV?
Just the DMV, leave them here until next spring after we get contractor in there to redo the whole parking lot. Because crush line engineering right now is designing it.
What time of the year is it that the appraisers are in office?
Out, uh, she said the best time to do the parking lot would be July, I believe. I don't quote me on that, but I think July. July is the best for Sue.
Not at the DMV, that's when everybody's.
True. So again, I mean, if if you were to do it down there during July when they're all out and DMV is still down here. You're gonna probably help with a lot of happy people not having to. Well, I'm assuming they're gonna go to the hardware store and park there, they're gonna go down to the fairgrounds, they're gonna be parking on the freeway or the.
So we're not gonna be, first of all, we're not gonna be able to time this for one division. We have three divisions down there. July is these two's busiest time. So, you know, because that's good for Sue, that does not mean it's good for building.
Well, I'm just talking number of employees. Sue has how many remodel appraisers in there in office some part of the year and out? I was just thinking.
Right, yes.
And that's gonna greatly affect our current parking down there too, when you add twelve employees.
That pretty much fills up the parking lot, which bringing into like, I just wish I had come here a lot sooner. Because I would have really, I feel like, how do I say this politically correct? I feel like this is a facility's fault. We should have taken the lead on this and did the outside and prepared that place for the amount of traffic that's gonna be in there before we went inside and did.
Yeah, we didn't ask Scott to do that, so I don't put that on facilities. The whole conversation was that we were gonna add another parking lot down in back of that. And I think we still are gonna do that.
I hope so.
Be a timing. And in the meantime.
In the meantime, you're gonna have some angry people, I think.
Well, if we, and I like your idea, if we leave DMV here until next summer. We take the time, we get this parking lot done up there. Next spring or whatever time of year it takes to do it. And get a contractor in there, he takes out all the blacktop, redoes it, because everything's settled. We're gonna have to redo all our pavers too.
I don't wanna have this conversation about Sue.
And we're gonna have to do all of it.
Oh, I think she left.
So that that needs to be done.
And Chairman Commissioners, we could add it to next.
But if we leave them there.
I mean, it just alleviates and it's not like we're shutting down this part of the building, right? We still have people in here, so. The only real people it will affect is Sue and her and her team. They'll be split up.
That would actually help our security challenges for the near future. Because I feel like if the only people that really minus the building department, that have a lot of people coming and going is the DMV. Now, the building department may have to figure out how to escort people in and out.
But they get, they got twenty-four. I think there's thirty-eight stripe spots down there right now, remember right?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
How many employees will be?
We've got fourteen, when we add that one side going down the hill, we've got fourteen new spots. And plus take out that little center section, we can get one, two, three, four, five, six more spots.
But we need like two trailers.
Front doors.
Are you planning on hopefully building up like the northwest side close to the highway?
We weren't, we are, but that's down the road. We want to see, once we get this first part done, finished. And see how it flows and see how it works. If we see a need, then we can go west, we can go right up toward the highway. We got a lot of room over there.
I think originally we said there was twenty-eight or thirty employees down there.
Well, there's four, I mean, there's nine just with the building.
When we, when we counted them all up, I had the different departments count. It counted up to about thirty-eight to forty.
Employees?
Vehicles from employees.
Plus they'll have their accounting vehicles there.
Right.
So we're gonna have to park down at the fairgrounds. All those people are gonna have to park down at the fairgrounds for now and walk up the back.
There's two spots down there when you just drive down the hill, it's not even marked. There's a spot there.
Gonna like claim that for the smoking department away from the building, you know, like. But I don't care. I could put it over the hill too.
If it's snowy and icy, I don't think we want to have the liability of having people park at the fairgrounds.
Nope, you don't want them walking up that hill.
Snow storage on the upper parking lot too is, I mean, that heats up quite a bit of. Once you get enough snow that's. It doesn't, I don't think it's operational.
It looked like it was okay. So I I was just wondering if, does it go out into the?
Is that we adjourn for the day and that set this as a workshop or?
Next week?
Next week or the twenty-second in the afternoon.
As much as I want to be involved, we're moving on the twenty-third, so.
So next week?
No, next week be fine.
Yeah, we gotta call off ITD if we're not gonna do that because they're scheduled for the third to move everything, so.
Do two fifteen. And then you want this to be the last matter on the agenda besides the evaluation?
I'll try to call in if I can. And just, I mean, so I guess what we need for certain is a head count for all the employees that are gonna be down there.
We already got that. We already got the head count.
Thirty-eight? And we only have how many parking spaces?
Thirty-eight.
Okay, well, that doesn't work.
That's why, that's why we were wanting to add it and we've run out of time.
So I've been having this conversation for two years. I'm tired of having this.
I'm so sorry to come now at the last second. My head wants to explode. If the building didn't work, we should have had this one before we ever bought that armpit.
We still appreciate you bringing it up and asking the hard questions even though it probably wasn't what you wanted to do.
No, I didn't want to do that, but I really feel like it might make our job easier, specifically my job. When it comes to redoing the pavement and stuff and everybody else honestly involved. If we can reduce the foot traffic and vehicles down there until we can get it set.
That's a good idea. It really is.
And if we can't, we can't. It's fine. We'll we'll make do.
Let's get Sue to this meeting next week. We we've had her to the invite.
Okay.
Conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hate that building. It's jinxed.
You gotta go down there. It looks really nice right now.
I am excited about that. We have a new face.
Commissioners, would you like to adjourn?